Gracious Father, we blessed to be here in your service today. But we pray that all we do and say, all decisions that we make will just be guided by your discernment and your wisdom. But we just ask you for our great harvest for our community, Lord, for our state and for our nation. Lord, we need your guidance. We need your protection over this great nation. And we just pray this thing in your name. Amen.
My ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'll call the regular meeting of Gates County Commissioners to order our February 7th, 2018, 10:02 PM. I'm sorry that we are over here since we have a large private neutral, but the courtroom is being used today at court, so we had to move over here. So kind of work with us. We can bring in more chairs if needed. Go down. Okay, first order of business is to approve the minutes for the regular meeting for January 3rd, 2018, and the emergency meeting on January 23rd, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
Chairman Allen, I'd like to make a correction on January 3rd, under the delegations unannounced. In the second sentence, I said Commissioner Jordan asked that the dog is in terrible shape and owner of the duses. He had two in there. The duses was put, we don't have. That's administrative error, correct? How many motions have checked against that?
And I'll second the motion, Mr. Allen.
The motion has been made in front of the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, now I'll force the approval of the agenda and adjustments to the agenda. And there is one, because we're trying to be accommodating to DOT and those who want to be unites, the delegations before the unites delegations. We'll have Buddy Lane and then we'll have the DOT presentation.
May I ask that Scott Bailey with CRI be placed first under the announced delegations, he can then, once he's finished, work with the comments office.
Okay, and he is the auditor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll put him first. Then with Lane, then DOT. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
Who? Second.
Motion has been made in front of the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so we have the agenda adjusted and we'll start with the auditor from CRI.
Good morning, Mistress.
Good morning.
What I wanted to do, I didn't want to take up a whole lot of the time today, but to give you an update, I wanted you to introduce myself, to sort of take the story, tell me how it's really worked, and give you an update on progress. As you know, Jeff Best had proposed on the Gates County engagement in 2017. Towards the end of the year, in November, Mr. Best exited the firm. So at that time, that's when our firm realigned some engagements, which we were anticipating and in this space, at the beginning of January, that is when that took form, the assignment before the Gates County office. So, once we began that, we took an assessment of what had been done, what we could continue to use, what we needed to be adjusted, and since that time, we have continued to move forward with the audit. We've been working really hard, trying to make a lot of progress, and we are currently targeting a completion date at the end of this month. So, that's where we are, that's how we got here. I wanted you to sort of know who I am, and I'll provide my contact information to you if you don't have it after this meeting, so if you have questions or things of that nature, you can ask me if you have it at the current date. I'll answer those to Jeff Best and I will.
Well, thank you for coming, and certainly we'd like to ask all the guys as fast as possible, because we have school division.
Absolutely, and we are mindful of that and trying to prioritize this engagement with that in mind.
I'm sure you're aware that it's kind of neat to have the audience in the town of Mary, so that we could get the loans interest-free or low interest loans that we're trying to get. What do you feel you'd worry about the counties pretty good?
I really stepped into the engagement towards the end of November, I said, and I certainly can follow over it a week after Thanksgiving. So, I was able to get on site during that last week in November, first week of December. It was at that time we became aware of what the public needs more than ever.
For future reference, in a situation like that, could you all have gotten another firm to come in or allow us to get some money off of it? This is going to cost us quite a bit of money, and there's what could have been done to try to get that void on time for January 3rd, 4th, if we needed it.
It's kind of hard to say. Even in hindsight, it's still just a couple months away, so our options in that regard, I don't have a full accounting of what those might have been, except that we did make some moves in terms of.
All right, well, we're trying to recover now, so anything you can do, do as fast as possible, possibly, but sure helps.
And we are committed to that.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Allen, I'd like to state for the audience that we're not the only county affected by this situation, so it's not even in here that caused it, it's an outside issue. And what we're referring to is in trying to renovate and build a new school at Central Middle School, which probably all are aware of. That's what has been affected mostly by the failure of the audit to be complete. That'd be fair to say, can that state what?
Well, originally, there was a problem that we sort of had, but it was that we didn't have architecture.
Right, so anyway, I think the favor said it's a perfect storm kind of situation, and that's probably the case at this point. Anyway, just wanted to put that out there. We ask this gentleman to come and to be here for questions. We appreciate you coming and making yourself available to us.
Certainly, if you have questions later, please reach out to me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Buddy Lane.
Good morning. On your agenda later on, I see that you'll have to be discussing the resolution to support secondary roads and contemplating the road and ending the road later on. I'm the only one that does on the end, Force 37. And you should have a map showing that part of the road and where the landowners are and so forth. Since I've moved there, the road has continued to be looked after less and less by our county DOT. We have certainly less staff than our county DOT can have at that time. To be kind of long story short, but I couldn't pick up my house and move, but the road is not being looked after properly. And so I would ask y'all to consider letting me have the road to look after the road. I'm the only one who has to go out there every day and carry out everything with my vehicles, and I just get tired of beating up and down the rock road and nobody looking after it like it should be. Currently, what happens, what's happening is the shoulders of the road have built up over time, and when they grade the road, they grade it flat, they push rocks to this side, they push rocks to that side, and it holds water. The whole road, if you go down there after a rain, I won't say the entire road, but a lot of roads just got water standing on it. And I'm mainly named lots of rock roads on farms and stuff that we farm, and some of a lot of them are graded once a month and have more traffic than this road does, and it's just not being looked after like it should be. So, if y'all, DOT's not going to look at you, I'd ask you to let me look at you. I mean, I can name names like that, but just be like all about it.
Mr. Allen.
Contingent Road.
And Madam Chairman, Mr. Lane, if you will, Buddy, discussed that with me maybe two or three months ago, and I've taken a look at it as well and covered some personnel of DOT and put it to the vote. And Buddy, I believe that you have talked to DOT in Raleigh?
No, in, 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 of course, in Gates.
And you had their blessing?
They said they didn't, if they wouldn't care in one way or another, they really come and have to cancel. They, I asked, I said, "Do you see in the future a trend of it getting better?" Because the trend over the last 10 years of it getting looked after less and less and less, it seems like, and they said, "No, we don't see that trend changing."
It's not the first time we're hearing about it, because Commissioner Freeman had brought it to our attention, the package leading to this other.
I mean, to be from a pragmatic standpoint, I really don't see, I mean, it's not everybody accountable. It is everybody, I pay my taxes, so it is everybody's responsibility, so to speak, it is a public road, but it really doesn't affect anybody but me. Nobody else really has to go down on that end. The only end of the road is paved, but the end of the road is not.
I believe we discussed it earlier, I believe that we stated that new school buses, school buses came from one end, but they stopped there at basketball.
No, they don't, two maybe to down these.
All the way?
They don't have to, you can go around.
You're talking about the area where it stops being paved, the rock part, that not the entire?
No, 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 I don't want any new pavement, just the end of the road.
Okay, we will take this matter up at later than the new business, and we have DOT here to say there's questions about the situation and their concerns. We will let them, they'll be here to address those.
Madam Chairman, I think I might know a little bit of that road. You're not asking for them to abandon the road, is that? I mean, sometimes people ask us, I mean, to stake a abandon the road, are you asking for them to abandon the road?
Yes, sir.
You want them to abandon the road and you take it off?
If they're not going to keep it fixed, and there's no trend that says they are.
I think that's one part of this that you know, is because it is, you know, waiting for them to abandon the road to do that. And that's what the county is scared, but you didn't ever say.
That's why they have a petition to abandon the road.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lane. And I will have the presentation from DOT. I think you can dial us in the phone.
Good morning, and thank for the opportunity to be here. My name is Jerry Jennings, a business engineer for this DOT for Division One, and we're trying to go around at each of the counties in our region to provide a general update of things going on within the area, particularly in Gates County. Before I give you some presentation, I'll speak briefly to Mr. Lane's comments. One, we'll make note of the maintenance concerns, and certainly while we're considering, y'all consider, while we're investigating the abandonment request, we'll take note of maintenance concerns and, and then we can, you know, ensure that it's maintained to the best of our ability. Our resources in terms of equipment and personnel over the last several years have certainly reduced, and as the number of unpaid roads that we have have reduced, the equipment and such for maintaining those unpaid roads has reduced. But certainly, I can appreciate those concerns, and we'll certainly take note of that. In terms of the abandonment process itself, we have certain procedures that have to be reviewed in terms of the property ownership and the process that we go through, assuming y'all support this resolution, it will go to our district office and to our rideaway boats, the process that we will go through to investigate it, assuming all the criteria are met, it will go to the Board of Transportation for final action. Once that's done, then we would, you respond back to the county that we have abandoned, you know, our interest in that portion of the road. So there's a process that we would go through to. So, I think you have a copy of the presentation that we put together here. Couple things I want to do here is introduce you to our current staff. We've had some staff changes, I want you to be familiar with, put some names with faces, know who to call for what, and provide an update on some projects that are ongoing or upcoming in the area, and then provide an update on some maintenance plans and kind of let you know what our, what our current efforts and plans are in regards to maintenance and operations, and then be glad to answer any questions as you may. And I failed to mention, again, I've got to have with us today Adam Rand. Adam is our Board of Transportation member for Division One. He represents this region on the State Board of Transportation in Raleigh, and Adam will have a few words to say in my presentation. In regards to Division One staff who are here with me today, I just want to recognize have Wind Bridgers as our Division Maintenance Engineer. He's over all of the maintenance activities that occur within our 14-county division, so all of the, all of the maintenance activities, all the yellow equipment, all personnel goes into maintaining our system following the wind. And Ronnie Sawyer, Ryan, is our Assistant Division Maintenance Engineer. Jim Hugley sitting behind him is our new County Maintenance Engineer for Gates, Shawan, and Compton Counties. So he is the local person that we talk with, as well as Mike Van is our new Transportation Supervisor. He's not here today, but located here in Gatesville. He replaced Robert Winslow, who many of you may have known, who retired last year. Also with us today, Randy Midget. Randy is our District Engineer in Elizabeth City, who covers the Northeast Six Counties, and his area responsibility is contract administration for various projects we have ongoing, contractor activities, as well as the various permitting functions that DOT handles, such as driveway permits, right-of-way encroachments, subdivision reviews, cycling reviews, road additions, road abandonments, things of that nature. So for a few project updates, just in your packet, a few upcoming projects that I'll mention. We have upcoming projects to replace the bridge over Dim Swamp on Drumfield Road. It's about a $600,000 project scheduled to go to contract, actually this month. Work will begin later this year and be complete by November. The next project y'all mentioned is a little bit further out, but it's certainly a, I think it'll be a positive safety improvement, is because we've ruined the visible swamp there. You know, for years, there's been discussion about multi-laying that project with. It's not currently in our tenure plan, but what this project will do, will widen the shoulders through that area, and certainly will provide safety enhancements. Basically, we go from Acorn Hill Road up through the county line through the area, right immediately through the swamp. That's about a $5 million project. Obviously, there's a lot of planning and design permitting aspects that go into that. So right now, the planning on it is for right-of-way acquisitions to occur in fiscal year 21 and construction in fiscal year 23. And there's an opportunity that may to be accelerated some, but on the current schedule, that is worth programing in our TIP, our State Transportation Program.
Guardrail.
The plan would be to widen the shoulders enough for guardrail if we need it, but the design has not been finalized to that point yet, so the plan would be to do all the widening away from the visible swamp and shift the road that way and have wide paved shoulders as well as wide open shoulders, and have plenty of shoulder to not have the need for guardrail, but that, that design is not in progress yet. Also have project funded to replace the bridge over Ranger Swamp on Bosley Road. That is scheduled to go to contract in the fall of this year. It's about a $750,000 project. Some utility work is underway now. Next project is another bridge replacement scheduled to let, or go to contract later this year over Butler and New Branch on NC 37. That's about a $1.1 million project. Again, some utility relocation work is ongoing now. Next couple of projects are two smaller scale projects that we have been able to fund through. A new program called High Impact Low Cost Program, which was a new program that the General Assembly funded this past year. The intent of these projects are smaller local need projects that we can turn around quickly and can have a high impact, positive benefit with the construction of the project. So the first one is the intersection right here in Gatesville of 37 and 158 Business. It's just reconfiguring that intersection. It's very awkward aligning that with the islands out there and the stock condition of middle intersection. So the plan would be to remove those islands, make it a traditional T-type intersection, resurfaced intersection, get the utility pole out of the middle, and basically make it a traditional type intersection that operates much more safely and efficiently than it does currently.
Can you, can you say anything about date on that?
The, it was just funded this past month, so we're hopeful that we'll be on a contract later this year. We don't have a definitive schedule yet, but the design of that is underway now. The next project is a very similar situation. I mean, this is one that this board has raised concerns about, it's just up the road at the intersection of 37 and 158 Business. This is, the first project is about a $90,000 project, this is about a $115,000 project. This is where 37 and 158 Business split, and again, a very awkward designed intersection. You know, often you have folks driving through the intersection like, maybe like they're not supposed to and not the most safe manner. The plan here would be to redesign it so that NC 37 becomes the through movement, that there's more traffic, it appears, on that leg, and then TN to 158 intersection. So that project, again, is funded, it was just funded this past month. The design of that is underway, we have to have it in contract later this year. The next slide I provided is just kind of a general update on how our State Transportation Improvement Program works in general. And so, that is how the large capital improvement projects are funded. And the projects I'll mention are, you know, an example, that would be the US 13 project that was completed a couple of years ago. Even the project through the visible swamp I mentioned was funded through the STIP. But it is, it is the process in which, the program that identifies funding and scheduling of those major capital projects. So the projects are selected through a data-driven process in conjunction with the Alamo Royal Plan Organization, and Gates County participates in that, in that organization. So it's a 10-year plan, first five years are committed projects, the second five years are subject to be re-prioritized every two years when the plan is updated. So, this 10-year plan includes not only highways and bridges, but also other modes of transportation, aviation, railway transit, ferry, bike and bed, so the whole gamut. So it's a, it's a major document published every two years by NC DOT. It is available online, and it's a difficult link that I provided there, but you can go to DOT's homepage and you can get it from there fairly easily. Now, a few projects that I'll mention that are not currently in the 10-year plan, but are subject to be re-scored and re-prioritized in the next update are US 13 from Tar Hill to the state line. That's a project that used to be in the STIP, but is not currently. It, in effect, fell out through the prioritization process, didn't score high enough to be programmed. Couple other projects in that same situation are US 158 from Tar Hill back to Morgan's Corner, the widening of that. Those, those projects are still identified as future needs, but they have not scored high enough through that prioritization process to be funded in that 10-year plan. It's our.
That scoring, is it within our district or is it statewide scoring?
There are three tiers of scoring. So there's a statewide tier, some projects like 158 and 13 would be eligible, and a statewide tier, and that is a, a statewide tier is 100% data-driven, and all projects across the state on that tier compete against each other. They have a regional tier that is 70% data-driven, 30% local input, local input from the RPO. And that is more so your regional-type projects, your NC routes, your major secondary roads, or your statewide tier projects that didn't score well enough to be funded there, and in effect cascade down to the region tier. Okay? And a region is two divisions. So for us, it's Division One and Division Four, which is the Rocky Mount, Wilson, Goldsboro area.
Is it fair to say we're competing?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So then, the division tier, the third tier, projects compete only within the division, and that would include many projects. So that would include secondary roads that would not be eligible with the regional or statewide tier, but would also include any other projects that didn't score at the regional or statewide tier that would cascade down to the division level. At that level, 50% of that is a data-driven requirement. Again, the data is based on safety, traffic volumes, a lot of those sorts of factors, and 50% of that at the divisions here is local input. Certainly, that local input can influence those divisional projects much more so, however, there's less money available at that Division One tier. So that's, that's part of the challenge, and the RPO is certainly very involved in working through that process.
Before we leave this, we submitted to the State Department of Transportation, I guess about two years ago, we had a heavy rain flood, and the swamp at Sundar, it stopped like Sundar, 158, 32. We had a resident to be washed, this flood out, and that's an area that's no flood out when we had severe rain, and the, oh, we had to push over this swamp, and we died. Tomasson, I think you mentioned. And we asked for rail to be put there. You know, surely that project, I gave them that idea, over $100,000. If that, probably $20,000. Where did we stand with that project? How would we get it financed? I mean, we seen it safely, it's the number one thing there, but we haven't heard of things.
I don't recall, but we'll certainly find out where that's standing and let you know.
Okay.
Certainly. A couple of things that I want to mention in wrapping up in terms of our maintenance and operations. The, talk about our HMI plan, How We Make Some improvements Plan. This is, in effect, is our focus, our plan to maintain our pavements. Our pavements are the biggest investment that we have in our transportation system as a whole. So our HMIP is a five-year plan in how we will address our pavements. It's a route-specific plan, five years out as to how, what we will do to how we will maintain those pavements. It includes resurfacing, which everyone is very familiar with, as well as pavement preservation, which is your VST, your surface treatments. It can be crack sealing, it can be thin overlays, other type of treatments, all intended to extend the life of that pavement. So in Gates County alone, over the next five years, there's about $2.5 million planned in pavement preservation activities and in resurfacing, almost $12 million planned in Gates County alone. See the mileage that that represents. And this is a, this plan is available. We can provide it to you, but it's fluid. You know, the first year is locked in, but it obviously is going to change year to year based upon the allocation of funding we get, based upon the condition of the roads as they change from year to year. Point is, you know, we do have a plan. We do work towards maintaining those roads to the best of our ability. We select those roads based upon pavement condition and the local knowledge of our folks on the ground. The next page is kind of just a snapshot of what that plan would look like. Not intended for you to be able to see every little road here, but it is mapped down to individual road segments. So what that snapshot gives you is the roads that are currently under contract to be completed by June 2019. And every year, we will have new contracts for new roads. Lastly, I'll mention our RMIP, our Road Maintenance Improvement Program, which is pretty much everything outside of the pavement. And this is a more formalized plan than we used to have with the goal of becoming more proactive in our routine maintenance than we have in the past. Obviously, we want to be reactive to concerns as they arise. We know if we can be more planning proactive in our maintenance activities, we're all better off in the long run. So right now, about 50% of our maintenance allocation is focused on plan and maintenance activities. And that's drainage ditch maintenance, shoulder maintenance, pipe replacements, pavement markings, things of that nature. The other 50% continue to go towards those reactive concerns that come up. You know, your routine needs such as molding the grass, you know, fixing stop signs that get knocked down, patching potholes, a thing that you just have to do every day. So in Gates County alone, in planned activities, in this year, we have about $1.1 million currently planned. And again, that's about 50% of our maintenance allocation for Gates County. And lastly, certainly, we want to focus on our planned maintenance. Certainly, we want to be responsive to concerns, problems, complaints that arise. So we provide contact information here for our local maintenance coordinator, Jim Lowly and Mike Van. Also provide contact information. We can go to our website, contact any department across DOT. It's a way to go online and provide comments or concerns. So that's it on the ballot, anything you'd like to add?
Simply just want to put a face to the name and let you all know that we're more than welcome to reach out and ask for questions or concerns.
I get complaints, calls, but one that stands out right now is about in the ditch. The area between Flat Ranch, 37, Flat Ranch Road and Carwood. A resident stopped me talking to me and he says that, "Well, if you get a heavy rain near the back porch, water is on his back porch because the ditches in that area have not been cleaned in years." And he said, "What can you do?" Says dude to try to help him out. That area between Flat Ranch Road and Carwood going south, I guess it's about a mile area, about half a mile area there, the natural area. That's a flooding area because of the ditches where I'm here.
The same citizen saw me last week and I went to the Soul Conservation Office up here and spoke with Matt about that, Matt Lo, and Matt told me that he was going to go out there. He's probably already been out there to look at that ditch. It's a short ditch, but it runs between that fork, between 137 to, between 37 and Flat Ranch up at Gates Castle Mill is what we're talking about. But it's, the flooding takes place on Flat Ranch back there. Anyway, they're aware of it. They don't know what they're going to do, but if you wanted to find out from them what they're thinking, I think they'll want to look at it from there.
Certainly, one of the challenges we have in those situations is the roadside ditches are certainly something that we're responsible for. When you get into outer ditches, then it becomes a property and then that becomes a much, a much more difficult challenge. We can participate in, we're a contributor to the water going into that outer ditch, but we're one of many different property owners going into it, some private property. And so that's a situation where it becomes a joint effort and how you deal with that. Where it's along the roadside and certainly we're responsible for that and we'll deal with that. But when we get to outer ditch, we've got to work with Soul Conservation and others and make that a joint effort.
The people that travel, how about 37 between here and intersection 13 going courts up? Right now, you've got a detour area there, replacing pipe. Can you just tell us what you're going to accomplish there?
Absolutely, and that work will be completed next week. Say that. I mentioned our planned maintenance efforts to replace pipes, you know, kind of as a proactive effort. So that's what's going on there, replacing cores that need to be replaced. So there's been an effort to replace a number of cross lines. The planned effort that works to be completed sometime next week.
And then it's proactive. All of those pipes are not collapsed, but age-wise, you know it's going to happen.
Yes, yes.
It's better to, we all know, it's better to have a plan in the means of the maintenance. If we know it's going to happen, we better fix it. May I tell you, then you wake up one day and it's collapsed. So that's what we're doing as a maintenance operation.
Just so happened that that road was under contract to be resurfaced.
So this is getting ahead of the pavement and putting new pipes over to resurface. So when we're done, it should be a complete project, a having project.
To clarify what Mr. Jordan was talking about the handrail. I know you were looking at the project exactly where it was. If you look on page four of your handwriting and slide number seven, if that were extended, just to move it in a hole where that branch that caused 37, that's where you're talking about. That's what it's been buying a couple of years ago.
If you would understand, I think we got a couple of people signed up that wanted to talk about DOT.
Okay.
Mr. Easton?
Mr. Easton? Mr. Easton, is there a phone?
And you are called back because of DOT. But everyone didn't put that in their class record. How about you get the people from the DOT so that they, you know, they're here and so that they have some questions on DOT and then we can go to the call. Mr. Easton, will you please state your name and address?
Carol Easton, 227 NC 37, Sade, Gates. I'm here as one of the calls of this intersection just north of Gatesville, 37, 158, Davis West. It's always been a problem, a long back and run with it and improve it over the years. But I put it on one side, but on the other, nothing for me to look up. Working my inside of, say, team member come through that also. Once in a while, you see the one slam down all breaks, not even. Neither backed up or creeped on through, the federal patrol might be watching or something. But I think the people who go to it purposely would be people that familiar with it and watch that old road and then they just whizz on through. But the most of it is, I think, you know, tunnel phones, mine somewhere else. And at this point, it's been improved over the years, but it's in disrepair. The lines that are supposed to cancel act one lane, they're scraped up, faded. You really can't see them until you're just about right on top of them. And I can see where that could be confusing to a lot of people. But I can be quite close and usually when people do something wrong, they sort of like to look and see if anybody sees it or does that. But I see a lot of people who go through that, yeah. They don't even know they've done anything wrong. Because truckers are not familiar with it, people that are traveling, older couples are a little bit lost. But then it's really getting dangerous. The first time, two people decided to go the same way to duck each other, you know? It's nothing for me to be going that way because I'm watching them just almost come to leave stop that somebody come on through. I'm a supporter, one Sunday morning, my mother and son almost take a nap on a drunk. It's, I mean, if I want to go sit down for 30 minutes, I could probably say something. And I think you mentioned something that might completely redesign. Like it is, like all you could do is try to complete the block one lane or run the strip or get something repainted and put, maybe it just needs to be complete.
I think it's a teenager or something.
Most of the traffic, it is, the heavy part is on 37. So, and I came in four times ago and I think some of your members got some love on that. Should have been in the fort. But something really needs to be done and needs to be fixed right. A lot of things happen there, I know there might be a field there, but you know, I think that's like somebody gets your name to do that way next day. It's a must do. Anything y'all could do, sooner you could do it, it would be real nice. Is that further up the pavement after you get these pipes in? I know it's real rough, that's 37 on the 13.
The portion, that's staying to the right all the way to 13, yes.
Okay, Mr. Easton, your time is given.
Okay, so anyway, anything y'all can do, the fast track, whatever that is.
Yes, sir. We have plans to address.
Might save somebody who are, live yours. Well, I don't watch that work.
Is anyone else who is concerned with DOT? Mr. Lilly?
My name is Paul Wood, I live in 26 NC 37, Sade, which is right at the intersection that these were talking about. I'd just like to second, I've seen a lot of close calls there with years, I've lived there 27 years and I just wonder any kind of group that y'all make for that, for that is available.
Okay, anyone else about DOT? Well, thank you, thank you DOT for coming. We do appreciate it. I believe, Mr. Jordan, when you were talking about Flat Ranch, was that the issue?
Yes, that was the issue, I think, that was why DOT had come to us.
And Mr. Easton, we had written a letter, well, sort of to DOT concerning that intersection. And also, one thing that's brought up to me is the intersection where the final road teems into Highway 32. A lot of people filed a back and forth on that road to work. There are running strips at the end where it goes to 158. They would like some run the strips to be put on the square it goes into 32 because on mornings it's foggy and all and if you've driven the road every day of your life for 20 years, sometimes you're not paying attention and all of a sudden they said, you know, to on Highway 32 and get traffic coming and accidents that don't happen.
Thank you, Leonard. A lot of people over the years have driven right into the woods. Luckily, this one is driven in there, they kill themselves or nothing when they would cross the road and drive right into the woods.
A lot of people from the shipyards have continued various places. You know, and once you've got the road in there for a long time, you kind of don't even think about it. And so they put it up and run the strips there. That may be our lure to wake them up that the intersection is coming.
I do have one comment on the widening of 158 Business Swamp.
Yes, sir.
The objective, the plan is to make that a four-lane highway in the future, is that correct?
Well, it's, it was a project one time in the 10-year plan to do that. Right now, that's not currently funded. So the long-term vision will be to multilane it, but right now, it's not funded within the 10-year plan. So we view the project to widen shoulders there as at least an interim project to protect that area until at some point in the future, the full length of that thing becomes. Which we don't know in that management district.
Well, I was just thinking that Duke could work because, you know, if you align it, then you can come back later on and put four lanes, initial lanes. What you do now, is that going to support a four-lane project in the future?
We hope that this can be done in a way that this could be two of the future four lanes.
We don't want to waste any money.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming. I'll tell you what, we'll take a five-minute break and I know you have a lot of important things to do and we need a straight break and then we'll come back to the old comments.
Thank you, Mrs..
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. Okay, this time we are beginning with a couple of comments. The first one on the list is Carol Witt. Please state your name and address and as we know, five minutes is the time.
Yes, ma'am. How did it start yet, though?
When you start speaking.
Good morning. Carol Witt, 29, Lighters Road, Gates. I wasn't able to attend January's meeting because of the snow. I sent each of y'all an email February 18th about extreme weather conditions. Going to fall under 316 outdoor standards. We, the people, would like it to read, no dog should be allowed to be tethered, tied, chained up outside for more than 30 minutes if the weather is below 32 or above 90. This came into place because during all that snow, I was out delivering houses, delivering hay and delivering food. I was bombarded with phone calls from the citizens, animals in distress, animals in plastic houses, wooden houses with absolutely no insulation.
If you are pressed for comments to the board, please.
Yes, ma'am. It does not say in our ordinances that there has to be insulation, but it needs to be. Common sense, we lack a lot in the community, would tell a person that they need to put insulation in there, but it's not in there, so please put it in there. We do need to have that outdoor standard. We've got one for outdoor standards 316, one for sunlight. So outdoor standards need to be put in there for the cold and extreme weather. Shelter 2015, we can add the insulation to that. I also received several phone calls, and this is going to call under owner keeper 2011, keeping strays 3101. A lady was driving home one evening, there was a little dog in the road, it was getting dark. She stopped her car to pick up the little dog and discovered the little dog was blind. His toenails were growing into its pads, his hair was matted, he was infested with fleas. She knocked on the door of the house that he was found in front of. People had no clue where he lived, there were other houses around. She took him home, called animal control, animal control is on duty. Called dispatch. They told her he would be working the next day. She kept the dog overnight. She bathed the dog to get rid of the fleas, she fed the dogs. When she called dispatch the next morning to get animal control, dispatch told her the dog now belonged to her. No, you can, under 2011 owner keeper, a person had in custody of any animal included strays, feral cats or dogs kept on their property and provided sustenance for 10 days or more after first reporting. When she called dispatch that and tried to explain this to dispatch, dispatch told her to put the dog back in the street. And this is a good Samaritan act, uh-uh, we can't have that. Animal control should answer that. Animal control should answer that call. He did later on and took care of the situation. The lady did discover who the dog belonged to. The owner supposedly had been under investigation before, I can't tell you that that happened with this dog. That needs to change. Three ten one also says seventy-two hours. So, if you're going by ten days here and seventy-two hours there, we've got a lot of conflict in here. It's either ten days or it's either seventy-two hours, what is it? You know, so, Good Samaritan knows, okay? If I pick this dog up because it's in the street and I can't find the owner of this dog right now, and animal control is not on duty, another deputy is not on duty to kind of take this dog and take it to the shelter, I don't want Good Samaritans to stop serving the neglected animals in our county. So, that needs to be fixed. Inhumane conditions, animal control, A C job, three oh two six G and H. Investigate cruelty or abuse with related animals. Make such canvases of the county as necessary for the purpose of asserting compliance with this article, our state statute. Two oh one nine, inhumane conditions, three oh three one, cruelty to animals subject to conditions detrimental to its health or general welfare. I got a call concerning a dog that was chained twenty-four-seven out in the cold rain. Animal control was called. I intervened because I called him. I don't ever make a phone call unless I see the animal myself. Or fellow rescuers, animal advocates actually see the animal, to see that animal is in distress. This dog was standing in three inches of mud and water. That, to me, is detrimental to its health. Because is anybody in responsibility, I know, I'm gonna sign up again. I'll sign up again.
Are you a rule, number four, to make a decision?
I'm almost finished, ma'am. Please.
We'll do thirty seconds.
Oh, that's not enough. Cryptos, paridia, campylo, leptid, lepto, giardia, coxidia, all of that stuff can be detrimental to a dog's health. It's parasitic, it's bacterial, you're talking about diarrhea, vomiting, loss of weight, standing in mud and water. When I had the conversation with animal control, I told him everything else was within our ordinances. Sad to say, because the dog was chained and he was in a plastic house. That's our ordinance, that's our yucky ordinances we have. Standing in mud and water, to me, is inhumane conditions. Doesn't state it in here, mud and water, but it does say inhumane condition. His response to me was, well, this is free of trash. He's standing in three inches of mud and water, twenty-four-seven. So, we've got to put that in there so that whoever is enforcing these ordinances doesn't have to use common sense, that they can see, okay, no, this isn't right, mud and water, uh-uh. I'm sure there was feces and urine in that water, because that was his space, this was his space. That's all he had to move around in. But I'll sign the beginning out of there.
Why would, and why would we have the rules? Because we have a whole list.
I know you do.
And we cannot, we need, I have to give everyone a chance to speak.
I totally understand, but I do have more, so I will be back.
Thank you, if you're able to, give us a copy of all that.
Do you have a copy here? Because this right here, so this right here, Commissioner Jordan, this is our ordinances, this is our ordinances, right here. And I went in and earmarked because we really, we need to get it right this time and not have to do this anymore. It needs to be a hundred percent to protect animals. But I'll be back.
Okay, next is Cassie.
Vaniloche.
Okay, Vaniloche, thank you. Say your name and address, please.
Cassie Vaniloche, forty-one Whitehurst Road Gates, North Carolina. I have been out here in the county for seventeen years. Over time, our county is useless for animal welfare. I see many dogs living their life at the end of chains. No human interaction, no proper structure, et cetera. Animal control officers, before Wall, used to come out if they got a call and check on the animals. But he does not do that. He much rather sit up, up the road and make chitchat with the hunters. It's sad that many other citizens will call me because they call animal control. I get calls and texts about animals in need. I go out and deliver hay, dog food, and many more items so these dogs can kind of live comfortably. This is not my job, it's animal control's. But the difference between me and him is that I have compassion. I cannot just turn my head the other way. I have a heart. The dogs are the ones suffering. Many people think that's okay, it's not. Why get an animal treated like a lawn warden? Why get a dog if it's gonna live its life at the end of a chain? I think people think it's okay to neglect the animal, needs to live like they do, just like the dogs on round tree line. I'm sure all of you are aware, the surrounding counties, cities, and states have changed their animal welfare ordinances to be progressively remade. So, my question to all of you is why Gates County remains in the dark ages? We need change out here for the dogs. I hope you have some compassion in your heart to change our ordinances out here for the better.
Okay. Okay, Marion Brooks, and this Brooke is giving us a letter?
My name is Marion Brooks, I live in Sunbury, North Carolina. I'm with here for twenty-nine years now. And my concern is the Sunbury trash site. In August, that trash site had a little house, and most people around called it the swap house. People could go there, put things in, people could come, they couldn't afford, and take things out. So, I did a petition for this house. I have five hundred and fifty signatures where people would like to have this house brought back. And I've gotten so many different stories. As a matter of fact, I was going around taking signatures, and one young lady said to me, I'll sign that, I'll be glad to sign it, but she was so anxious, I was wondering what was going on. She said, can I tell you a little story? And I said, sure. She said, I'm on the run. She said, I'm on the run, I can't, you know, like, back up. She said, no, she said, I'm not on that kind of run. She said, I was married. She said, my husband used to beat the heck out of me. She said, I have four children. She said, I had my own bank account, wasn't much. She said, but I came to Gates County, she said, with nothing but my children and the clothes on our back. She said, and I would go periodically to the dump. That swap shop sent my children to school. It gave them toys, it gave us furniture for our house. She said, then all of a sudden, I went up there, swap shop was gone. She said, can they bring it back? And I have five hundred and fifty signatures asking for that house to be brought back. And I would like to know if there's anything the commissioners can do to help us get that little house back. And if not, can you steer me in the right direction to get that house back?
Do you have a petition paper?
Yes, I do. Well, I just wrote signatures, had people, I should say, write signatures.
We did mention it to the convenience site director.
Here is all five hundred and fifty signatures.
Thank you, ma'am.
We did mention that, convenience site directors that were here, what, last week?
Correct.
And we did ask them if it was any way possible, time, funding, to bring the house back, to do that. I think that, at the board, if we could send a letter or try to send, but we can give the funds, we can get that asset.
Certainly, that can be discussed in the P G C meeting. The P G sites are operated, the Quemmons, Chauvin, and Gates, all three counties operate those together. It is a, and there is a board concerning that, and it meets periodically.
Where did you say? The Quemmons?
The Quemmons, Chauvin, and Gates.
Okay, but Gates, uh, Chauvin still has theirs.
No.
Well, they must have just moved it in the last two weeks.
The last one, the last shop that was, that was available was one in Sunbury. Chauvin, Quemmons, there are no swap shops left.
Maybe this is a Chauvin thing.
But anyway, we could certainly bring it to that board to see. I think the issue is that the pies in Sunbury is in disrepair.
It did have, I will admit, it did have a small hole in the floor, but I mean...
That's a danger.
Yes, yes, it was. But I'm sure if she had put up, or whoever had put up a note, can anyone repair at a reasonable rate? Rate, or fix it free? I'm sure someone would have done it. I couldn't have done it myself, had I didn't put up the signs.
But that is not, it's run by the board, it's not run by our county or commissioners. But certainly, we can take it to the, to them to see, and what they're, what they can say, or if they could let, if there is enough people in the county who want, if we can, whatever we can do. I can't make promises.
Commissioner Felton and you are on the way, right?
Mr. Felton is on the board of convenience sites, I'm on the, uh, part of it. But we're both going to the meetings.
Yes.
And we'll pay for conserv.
Thank you.
And that's, but we can't make any promises.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eaton, Mr. Gliven, Randy Stann.
Yes, sir. I'm David Solomon, twenty-one Equestrian Lane, Sunbury. I'm mainly here to address partly, and the animal control ordinance, nuisance. I know this wasn't already addressed, the humane issues. I'll give you a brief introduction. About six months ago, we had a new resident move in, kind of in the middle of six other existing residences. He installed a kennel. These are about eleven dogs. I'm a hunter, so I'm not anti-dog by any means. There's other kennels close to us, so I'm not anti-kennel. But these are, these eleven dogs bark continuously. I read the ordinance, it mentions the nuisance concerns, what should be addressed, the timeframe in which it should be addressed. I contacted the county manager at first because I didn't know how to get in touch with Deputy Wall or the sheriff, I've emailed both. My main concern is that someone can come in and put a kennel in the middle of six other homes, and the dogs, I mean, I have my windows closed, the dogs bark so loud that they wake me and my children up in the night. And this isn't even in the summertime when we like to have our windows open. I've addressed all of these issues. This round tree had informed me that, that once Mr. Wall did complete his investigation, he would be in contact with me. I had a brief call from him on December twenty-first. Basically, no findings, that he said there was no findings. I informed him that I had multiple, multiple recordings, as well as my neighbors of these dogs. And this is in my little trial, I mean, y'all probably know what owl dogs sound like. Eleven, eleven of them going nonstop is just completely unacceptable. And then the animal control ordinance, they addressed those nuisance concerns for citizens. I'm not trying to, not saying that those dogs should be put down or anything like that, but when they come in and they, and it says in there, affects your way of life. I mean, I moved to the country, and just like everyone else, for peace and quiet. Just as them residents probably moved to have dogs. But, and you know as well as I do, if I had a party going on and I was keeping y'all up, and, you know, the sheriff called, they're gonna come down and they're gonna have me turn my music off. If I refuse to, I'm probably becoming down here. And I think the same, the same gratitude should be given to us complaining about these dogs. And, you know, there's, and I'm not even addressing any inhumane issues there. I'm strictly addressing that our neighbors around this kennel, we're absolutely fed up. I mean, we've, we've contacted them over and over and over. They inform us that investigation's gonna be done. No one's ever come to my house, no one's ever asked me for an email, no one's ever called me except that one time. And it was, and I would, I would express his demeanor as somewhat combatant, almost making, making, you know, why, why everything is okay, making an argument more for the dog owner and the kennel owner than for the resident. And I would just like to have some kind of measure put in place, maybe in the ordinance itself or in the building, building codes, and says there has to be some type of agreement amongst people that are going to be around these kennels, because they probably don't know what they're gonna have to do, and once they seem to get entrenched, they're very hard to, to remove. And I don't think that my family and I and all these people around us should be constantly woken up and in the middle of the night because of these dogs. And I would just like to see the, see something done with the animal control ordinance to address that. But mainly, it addresses the timeframe in there, forty-eight hours for them to make the nuisance. I mean, we were coming up on four to six months, and the dogs are still doing the same thing, and there's nothing being done to stop it, and it's just gonna get, this isn't something we, when the person first moved in, we gave them the benefit of the doubt, hey, maybe they'll settle down once they get used to it, but things have not changed. And I just don't want, you know, the citizens to have to, the residents around us to have to tolerate this.
Mr. Felton, another question. When you called animal control, at any time that they came out, were you able to hear the dogs at that time? I mean, have they...
That's kind of, that's a funny, that's a funny part. When they did come out, and I was there, I saw them, I saw them drive out, and of course, the dogs are going ballistic. And this, I said, see, I said, I mean, this is twenty-four-seven, and this comment to me was, well, there's a car, well, there's a car driving out, what do you expect them to do? Well, we, this, this kennel is directly on the lane where four residences are past that point. There's, there's cars moving constantly at all hours of the night, people work second and third shifts. He practiced, I told him, I said, thank you, you just proved my point. Because these dogs are causing nuisance from cars, but cars are repeatedly going up and down this lane. So, you're not gonna, what are you gonna do, stop the cars, not to stop the dogs parking down? That's why I said, you made my point, this is clearly gonna continue, because this is just how the dogs react to the car driving by. I'm not saying that they're vicious dogs or anything, but I addressed that a little bit.
And I believe we have a nuisance ordinance that also addresses noise, and I think it would also include animal noise.
I believe it does.
And between the two, I think that if the officer hears, you know, can witness it, then there's some probable cause for taking action, but I have to defer that to the sheriff's department.
Yes.
But I think it's almost a double covered.
Well, like I said, it's almost, it's almost like, you know, it's not a neutral position that he seems to take. He more or less wants to side with why, why things are okay, as opposed to siding with me and maybe do a little investigation to see, you know, because if, if he has to be the one to hear it, if he's not investigating, he's basically saying, you know, I don't wanna do anything. I don't wanna get to the bottom of this, and that's what my concern is.
Well, thank you for your concern, and we will certainly check in on the nuisance ordinance.
I'd like to get your address again.
It's on the...
Twenty-one Equestrian Lane, it's right off of Lassiter. The kennel, the kennel is located, the owner is, Equestrian just tees into Lassiter. So, he located, he took his kennel away from this house, but right on my leg.
So, the kennel would be on Lassiter?
Yes, thirty, thirty-six Lassiter is the kennel. And there's been a big social media blitz of all this, and, you know, if, and I hate to keep calling dispatch, they have other things that they do, that's what we have an animal control officer for. He would just investigate and take care of this issue. I don't wanna drag an officer away from more important things. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for your concern, and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Brian Fan?
Hi, my name is Frankie Man, I live in ten twenty-four Golden Beach, Virginia Beach. I'm here with Miss Witt, and I've been helping her with some of the issues with the dog. A little background about me, I was in military twenty-eight years, I was a dog handler. I had six dogs, bomb dogs, E O G dogs in Iraq and Afghanistan, Bhutan, Iran. Over there, they treat the dogs really, really bad, you know, the people there, the locals, but we, you know, we treat dogs good. I come back here after five years over there... I come back here after five years over there, and I come to Gates County. Gates County tends the dogs, lets the dogs suffer in bad weather. Lets them su- suffer, no water, frozen water. Where Mr. Stone lives, we actually had to go out there with the deputy showed up, where the dogs were snowed in. Eleven dogs snowed in their, in their, in their, in their bunks. Nope, no hay, nothing. They had actual frostbite on their feet. They're shaking. The deputy comes up, doesn't save one, where? Why? Well, they have kennels, or exposed kennels, or whatever, little plastic containers, all snowed in. Want to see it, go on Facebook, social media, happen. The owner, within two days, had all the snow out. Ms. Whit went there and she brought hay. We actually, right now, we're funding dog houses, gates, and everything like that. One of the things I, Mr. Jordan, was the safety issue, right? The young, the gentleman that drove over and went into the water, right? That was a big safety issue. These dogs are safety issues. Any human life, any life at all, is worth something. So to change the ordinance, to, to make few changes where people don't tend to the dogs, where they have to have housing for them, so they're protected against the elements, they have to have basic water. If you go out there and you're gone fourteen hours and the water's frozen and the dog is frostbited, what are you gonna do? Have you ever seen a dog suffer and die? I mean, on the news you guys had, and I hate to do this, I'm not throwing stones, but you watched a dog actually dehydrate to death, you know? It just, you know, safety issues. Little things, little things in the ordinance that can be changed to make a big difference. It doesn't cost the county anything. As a matter of fact, the county can't make money if they go out there and they actually find these people who are not taking care of their animals. And I'm not saying find them. I say give them a warning. And if they need help, there's people that are, that will go out there and help them. Because I know how, I'll go out and help. I have no problem going out there, building a dog house, helping with sheds, driving them anywhere they wanna go. I do hospice for people, so I'm not just compassionate for dogs, I'm compassionate for people. All my matters go. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you for that. Okay, Earl Ranstry?
My name is Earl Ranstry, and I'm in Sundery, North Carolina. I got three boys, ten minutes each. It's time for a little reunion, right, with the dog people here. And I'm gonna share this one minute. My, my son's family, they got three dogs, two in the house and one outside. Sportster, the thick-haired dog, he sleeps outside. Unless the weather is unusual there, he sleeps out like this at night, he's got a dog house. But when it got so cold below zero, they decided to bring the dog in. Well, Sportster, if you open the garage door, he runs in. Zero degrees outside, and they open the garage door, Sportster gonna come in. They had to go pick Sportster up and bring him in and put him in his cage, and it was only zero, zero outside. Well, the next morning, they got up and decided, we better go walk Sportster. Sportster walks out the door, he sees it's three degrees below zero. They had to pick him up and take him back outside. So the dog was scandalous and quick about where to stay. I, this is not on my part, Henry, but it's for all of you. I talked to Jerry. It would've been nice if I'd have known to tell him to explain it. Somewhere, and Jerry don't know it, I don't either, the policy of EOT changed. And they kept talking about the flooded roads and cleaning out the side ditches. And y'all can talk with the division engineer about this. Somewhere down the line, Robba changed this, decided to save money. So they quit cleaning out the drainage ditches off the road. Now, we don't have to have a PhD to understand that this water has got to go somewhere. And when they quit cleaning these ditches out and leave off the road, that created a problem. And it's a thing that got started somewhere back, and we don't even know where the foundation got started. But that is the problem. And if we don't get that policy changed like we're flat brats, so we can get those feeder ditches off the road, the water's gonna back up. And it had been for what, twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago, you see them clean them out all the time. But that is one of the problems, and Jerry can address that. He can't address it because it came from Robba. He can only do what he's told. You know, Ms. Brooks back here? I'm Earl, right?
Hi, Earl.
I told her that I thought her and I would've wound up being on a first-name basis. But I wanted to share this real quick. This lady, nothing that I had to do with it, Billy knows that I was interested in the swap shop. I'm not gonna take up a lot of your time, a lot of my time, I'm just gonna put the facts out there. And I don't want to end, end this, ruin my reputation of being outspoken and telling the truth, and let the chips fall. But this lady, back here, when it was like zero outside, I mean, in January, when it was so cold that I wouldn't leave the house to take my trash off without giving names. That's how dedicated she is to this project. I used the swap shop. I took things there that I didn't need, I didn't want, and I put them in there for people that were in need more than me. It was a good thing. Now, first of all, my first question. This is circulated around the county. I know y'all are not guilty, but I wanted to be on the record for you. Did the Gates County County Commissioners remove the swap shop or had anything to do with removing the swap shop?
To answer this note.
To the county, right. I hear that constantly. But I knew the answer, but we want to be on record on that, because you've been blaming something you didn't have to do. What the problem is, in my opinion, is my little bit of investigation. We changed management. And when we changed management, new managers come in and they have that judgment. And they want to be seen and heard. And all of a sudden, the swap shop disappears. Where is it was brought up? Everybody that went in there, you could, well, I could've got a piece of plywood donated to fix that little hole in the floor. That was an excuse. Y'all weren't even informed that the people were gonna tear it down, were you? Well, you, I mean, until it was done. So y'all, all five of you know the truth. Henry and I are on the same side, and we want to get our swap shop back. I want to say this. I've been talking with Billy a little bit. Early on, I thought I had a deal going with the Sundery Ruine Club, maybe Corby Ruine Club, and some more people to buy a swap shop and put it back. Well, there were some people that, and it got into politics over this thing. So I dropped that. But we do, this, and I think this hot one, Jack keeps, uh, giving it his heart. That's his heart. Jack's got, uh, a stimulator or something in his heart. And he keeps telling his battery plug.
How can you throw a sock at Mrs. Whit?
Anyway, so, you know, we, I, I, it's huge. And it's a recyclable thing. But for some reason, and, and Natalie sent me a, a email that kind of explained, because I'm still confused as to the management, one chart of this organization, not your organization, but the organization of the waste and lender and Billy on two different committees. And I wanted to know who in the heck was boss, you know? Because we are paying a fee, we're three counties, and somebody needs to be boss. And I'm always thinking, no matter how high up you've got somebody with your boss, if you're the CEO of General Election, which ain't doing you good, but if you're the CEO of General Election, the Board of the Republicans can buy you. Everybody's got a boss. And we need to get that swap shop back. We need to congratulate this lady standing out in the tentacle one day with about fifteen degrees taking signatures. Henry, let's get it done.
Earl, did, Earl, one question, uh, you mentioned the Ruine Club. Is that, is that positive today?
Well, I had to bring this up on camera, so. There's a feeling for some, and I can probably understand, but we won't discuss it. In the, in the Ruine Club, that the county commissioners don't like the Sundery Ruine Club. And, uh, so they got, that was the politics part that I brought in, because they wanted to, they thought they wanted to do it, but they were under the impression, and that's what I tried to explain, but nobody would listen. That y'all didn't have anything to do with it. That's why I want you on record, then. Because I tried to explain to the people, at first, I thought I had everything going. And then all of a sudden, this guy calls me up, this is no joke, man. And lending all these noise. But he called me, he wasn't fussing at me. I honestly held the phone like this. Now, I don't know if you as commissioners have ever had anybody that irate, but I actually held my phone like this in my hand that time. To answer your question, that was one person. I haven't been that. But I do know there are people in the Ruine Club whose names are on this petition that want the swap shop back. So I would not call it dead, and we can smooth that out of problems with the Ruine Club. Okay?
And I will say, um, and Ms. Holland was here, and Ms. White, last meeting, or his former. We have not had a board meeting in quite a while.
PCG board meeting.
Since last August. And all this has happened since then, we've not had a board meeting.
PCG board meeting.
Right, right.
And so, and we requested at that meeting to have one for all of them, so that we could talk about.
Well, this management change, and I mean, and this is, I'm getting a lot of hearsay and feedbacks, and I don't know what Natalie might get. Uh, and I said, I get, I know the, know how the people operate. One thing I do want to add, because this did come from, uh, the Ms. Hocken. She mentioned that there's some people going in and taking their items out and reselling. That, to me, is no problem. If I take a lamp out there and I'm gonna give it away, it's gone. Now, the lady that's homeless, what'd you say, only run, bring it?
That's what she told me.
If she was needed that lamp, I feel good. I'm not in the yard sales. I don't need four dollars for a lamp. And it, it really worked. And I think I took stuff out there all the time. But as far as, and the people did this, man.
But I was just relaying what you told me.
But I mean, you understand, right? And it wasn't, and, and this is funny, because I thought it was funny. And the friend of mine for years and years, Mr. Frank Rice. And Frank was always, all up to the end, would call me up, and he liked to talk about politics. And, but Frank would go out there twice, and all he got, about ninety years old, would go out there twice a day. And take everything out. And take it home, and then, I don't know what he did with it. But anyway, he resold it if he could, but that was just Frank. But I tell you what he was gonna do, and it wasn't going to the landfill and in the dump. It was going somewhere, and somebody finally ended up with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that is the end of the first, uh, public comments in the morning, I believe. Uh, so, that we will move on to. There's a couple comments and, you know. Okay, and we'll go to administrative reports. Uh, we have a, a report to hand out.
This is produced from fifteen, two thousand seventeen, through January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. The alleys were closed due to twenty-fifth to twenty-eighth, and January first for holidays. The office closed during quarantine, fifth, inclement weather. Office was open late on January eighth and the eighteenth due to inclement weather. Court got through, as you could see when you came in, worked on that, is progressing. Weather delays have pushed the completion until early March. And that was confirmed as of yesterday at the meeting. On January tenth, I attended the JCPC meeting. The JCPC approved the fiscal year nineteen request for proposals. The request for proposals has been posted on the community bulletin board. Lou Lou Gore, JCPC chair, may be contacted for more information by calling three five seven zero six seven seven. I also wanted to give you a very curious update on the historic courthouse. Weather has put India's construction back, uh, quite a bit. So he said it will probably be at least the beginning of March before he is able to send any crews up here. But later in the month of February, he will contact me, give me an update. Do you have any questions?
Uh, go ahead.
What was it, uh, a question for both of you?
It's for the JCPC needs for juvenile confinement council services for moving out. It's a variety, and it was taken from all of mine, the document I was given.
It's an annual, it's an annual, right, present services?
Yeah, various services.
Uh, and I know at one of our meetings, um, we had a request from a citizen about pursuit in Gatesville, and we're the attorney that includes you.
Yes, um, the consensus from those that I was asked to send information to and get feedback was that they need to approach the town of Gatesville. That they did not feel that it was the board of commissioners, since it was specifically addressing Gatesville.
And they have their own municipal. So we need to delay that. Okay, thank you. Any questions for the county manager? Okay, Ms. Lana, for the tax report.
Now, good morning, good morning. I have to review the collector's report there. Any questions or comments on that? You see, the month of, over one meeting for the month of January total collections, uh, all codes included. That's all fire districts, um, you know, gray districts, if you have any. Specific questions on that report?
I don't think we have any.
Okay, okay.
Do we need to get a refund?
Oh, we do have to refund, yes, indeed. Uh, one of them, the person associated with the refund and refund is an overpayment.
A refund, you have an action fee on the table. A refund for one night, eleven hundred, well, eleven hundred sixty-two dollars for the cent, as you mentioned, overpayment. It's paid by the individual as well as attorney. What is, and the proper documentation is attached to it? Do we have a motion?
No, I don't.
Yes.
Before we do that, can I, I do have a question.
Okay. Uh. I'm sorry?
On return checks, I see we have five hundred forty-nine dollars on the report. You know, a hundred and seventy-eight dollars return check fees. What is the percentage? I see that that's nearly, uh, not quite a percent.
They're not all return checks, they're.
They're not all return check fees?
That is also your after-charges collected, your advertising fees collected, any, your return check fees are included in that. That, that one's in the date. There's more in that one than the client.
When we have a return check, what is that fee?
It's ten percent of the check, twenty-five dollars, whichever is the one.
Okay.
We did have quite a, uh, an occurrence. We had, now, we didn't want to get on the check.
And we have collected all of that, all of those return checks and things that have been paid.
Is that, uh, that probably, their categories probably didn't like that for a while?
Yeah.
Oh, did you say it's in there, uh, check?
Yeah, your check fees, your, they act as fees that we collect, the endorsement fees we collect, you know? Not that field. So there's other things, you know, we collect that. That's all what we have to record.
Okay.
After charges, return check fees, advertising fees.
And?
I'll look at that one in G L code.
Okay, request for refund number one, um, to the First Bank for one thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and forty cents. Do I have a motion?
I'm sure I'll make a motion that we, um, return the, uh, overpaying fee of one thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made promptly second. All those, any additional questions? All those, please say aye.
Aye.
All those, please. Okay, refund number two is a hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cent. Um, once again, um, uh, how am I supposed to set up?
The mother parent, taxpayer asking to present, um, here we have your out of state report. And then letter sign of taxpayer.
The property's optimization is attached to this. Um, so. Um, so refund to Nancy Buck for one hun- one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents. What's the pleasure of the board?
So move, Madam Chairman, for a request of the refund for number two, uh, eleven thirty-one hundred dash one sixteen, for one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
Do I have a second? Okay, second, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Um, the next item is advertising for tax links.
The question I'm making from the board to that order to advertise, I think they both have supplied that letter from your run once there. As we move towards that period of time with the advertising for tax links.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we authorize the tax department, pursuant to law of General Stat one oh five three six nine, to advertise, uh, delinquent accounts, uh, in March.
And the question is, I think we have been doing it, uh, listing for ten years, and that is.
We'd like to pursue that, we can, we can pursue that.
I'll do that.
Okay, the motion's been made to authorize, um, the advertising for tax link based on law of General Stat one oh five dash three six nine. Um, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Second motion, uh, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As it that is approved.
True.
Okay, do you want to talk about the data conversion?
We can, we can touch on that, but continues to be smooth transition. Uh, we're in the listing phase, getting all the listing notices in. Um, Perry Brown, who of course on board with us, uh, a little days section there, has gone well. Uh, our next, uh, big item is the full, the remainder of all the, the candidate. Uh, basically that's the appraisal land records data associated with all parcels. That'll, that'll be sometime right apart this month. Uh, after that, we envision our, uh, relationship, if you will, the two staff will, will be kind of finalized and will be coming full throttle with the tech. In all facets, listing, you know, collections and appraisal. But it has gone smoothly, everybody's going cross training, uh, learning, uh, all the various methods of, you know, configuring the data and, and checking, so that, that's gone well. Thank the staff for all they've done and, uh, learning, sharing the data, um, you know, and, and going through that process.
Through the conversion, is there, has there been a saving of information? Is there a disk or something that old information has been saved?
Oh, absolutely, and, uh, keep in mind, we have proceeded with using the cloud. Uh, we're, we're gonna be on the cloud and once everything is complete and it's a continuous backup of data. Uh, we will continue to use the existing track server, uh, with taken next door, uh, you know, and the ball, go by the corner. That will have our debt setup information on it. Um, it, it's usually pretty pertinent to keep that naturally not on the cloud, but a designated server, you know, uh, in, in some of the technical accounting, so we will be using that. But ongoing backup and we're, you know, using the cloud will be, uh, continuous safety, encrypted, uh, firewall information, and that's all in place.
And your records, are they under the control of pension records, estate records?
Uh, we are, yes ma'am.
That's what I thought.
Yes, they, all that program, you know, whether it's, uh, working or listing, any facet of, of all of that, yes ma'am, for sure.
So you're regulated?
Oh, yes.
Uh, anything else?
Um, nothing.
Okay. Um, thank you. I guess it's a little deep rig, a little bit narrow, but the facts is.
Oh, yes, yes ma'am, yes, I'm very, that's, you're good.
Okay, um, any reports from the various departments? Okay, moving on the way along. We have a public hearing, um, for the text amendments concerning subdivision ordinance. At this time, do I have a motion to go to public hearing?
So move, Madam Chairman.
Okay, motions for men going to public hearing concerns this, uh, zoning, subdivision ordinance.
Second.
The motion is made seconded, all those, it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in public hearing for this. Um, we'll turn to our manager. A planner, not manager, so I have the votes. That's all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Then, public hearing, we have, yeah, an update, uh, to the text amendments we have, I believe, approved in both of them, the other statutory requirements that we had before. And so this is the expedited review, uh, which is the subdivision ordinance, section four zero two. And it was requested that we get a requirement connection and I did speak with Juncy at one way, at length, we spoke a couple times actually. And he recommended that we not change this statement at all. But it's just as they have written it in the section law. And he just recommended, we would have to meet these requirements as you spoke at length before. Each of these requirements before, it would be qualified as an expedited review by the office. We have been looking basically really about the law, um, due to section law, section four, ten, ten and twelve. And, uh, I will read it. You have proposed text for the new expedited review in the section four zero two, text six. It would be a new section added to the end of section four zero two. And it's under expedited review. And A, the administrator shall render decision within five working days after receipt of completed plan for the division of a tract or parcel of one little ownership if all of the following criteria are met. A, the tractor parcel to be divided is not exempted under section two oh one D. B, no part of the tractor parcel to be divided has been divided under this subsection in the past ten years prior to subdivision. C, the entire area of the tractor parcel to be divided is greater than five acres. D, after division, no more than three lots result from the division. And E, all resultant lots comply with all of the following, any zoning, lot dimension, size requirements. The use of the lots is in conformity with the applicable zoning requirements. And there is a permanent means of entry and address recorded for each lot. And that is the new complete statement for this section.
Okay.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to get technical.
Yes.
Uh, when you were reading the, of the last word, you, you actually said subdivision.
Oh, oh, prior to division.
Division.
Yes, division of the tractor, that's right, prior to division. Let's read.
Anybody have any comments?
We didn't have, this, this was not, we didn't have any expedited review, you know, court orders. What kind of time I need to do that?
Okay. If there's no public comment, we're going to close the public comment and then we will. Public question. Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move, second.
Okay, motions made, seconded, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this time we'll a close that, Commissioner George. No, not here. We have a problem worse today. Go ahead.
We didn't have any, uh, expedited review proof.
No, sir.
Okay, what was that time of?
Five day, oh, the previous time, right? Uh, if, we had to go through the technical review committee, there were forty-five days that we could review the, the technical review committee. This expedited review, they will not have to do, only meet, read this criteria, which will be five days. It's, it's, it's basically still, just a plan and it would be, uh, it's, it's involved.
And I really, if, if you watch your read from, uh, at Club Live, uh, lady, uh, we really, we can't change it.
Yeah, we recommend it not, maybe not in court challenge.
Yes, so it's not a lot. There are no options for us. So we have to kind of include that in our ordinance. And of course, the stipulations are very strict.
Yes.
So very few parcels will probably never be used.
Very few, they will, um, for the point, you know, if they utilize that, uh, of course, be ten years and it's, it's, it seems to be very strict, but it's, it's a lot of criteria.
And that need every one of them.
Yes, exactly, and I know we had talked about changing the level possibly and, you know, if that was possible and he just recommended not. And, um, that would be best part to handle until more than.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, we're in a, so we're in position to act on this today.
Correct.
Not the first time we've seen it, because Ms. Chair shared it with us earlier. Um, let's see, text. Um, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that, uh, Gates County Board of Commissioners accept the proposed text amendment, uh, to the new expedited review, section four oh two, minor subdivision.
To be.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
To be added to our current ordinance.
Yeah, to be added to our current ordinance.
Okay, and Mr. Freeman seconded, um, so the motion's been made promptly seconded, any further discussion?
No discussion, we would like to make a comment and, uh, I think we should, probably, all of my colleagues here, we expected this, this is the wording that we did expect, just so both of you hear that.
And this is relatively new, started July fourth. So there's no court cases, no challenges.
And that's the last question, is he wasn't, he was part of, it was going.
Absolutely. Okay, all those in favor of adding section four oh two, point six, expedited review to our, um, sub- subdivision ordinance? Um, we'll hold forward, start with Commissioner Freeman.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye, passes five to zero. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to the old business. And that is the, um, animal ordinances. Okay. I know it seems like it's been a long time, but remember January's meeting was, um, canceled because of the weather concerns. I mean, we didn't help any, uh, the public. And, uh, and this morning we heard numerous people speak to the animal ordinance and certainly various battles were made, um, in that discussion and a lot to thank about. We have, if you remember, we had a public hearing in November. Uh, at that time, uh, at the public hearing, I had the public hearing, in the discussions, we felt that there's some more work needed to be done. And we, and so we were going to have the additional, uh, additional discussions and, um, because of rules and regulations that we have to follow, uh, we, we have several options. I mean, what we can do. Um, if we do any changing, uh, we have to have, the text amendments have to be advertised and to be voted on and that will require a public hearing, a non-public hearing. Um, so that, that has to be done, uh, if we do any change. And I think probably all of us agree that there are some changes that need to be made. Then the question is, do we discuss it here today or begin a discussion? Or do, do we need a work session just on that, uh, before, because for the public hearing, we've got to advertise for the public hearing and we've got to advertise the text, I mean, amendment that we want to change. And the advertising for the public hearing, we have to have two weeks, uh, notice and, you know, we're looking, we do not have a second meeting in February, so we'll look at March seventh as what public hearing.
If you decide on to that, if you agree on text amendment today.
If we agree on text amendments today. Okay, and if not, we would have to have a work session very quickly. I mean, sometime, very quickly to get, uh, meet the March seventh deadline or that we had to do March twenty-first. It's just.
March nineteenth.
March nineteenth is the third, first Monday and the third Monday in the month. Okay, so just letting you know what the timeframe is for that. Okay, discussion.
Madam Chair, I think some valid requests have been made that we do need to consider. After I think that we should have a work session to, uh, further revise the animal control orders. And, uh, we're in back of the year.
Okay. Uh, as I believe I shared this to each of our, uh, my fellow commissioners, I had come up with a, a text amendment that I kind of wanted to include, um, and, um, I'm gonna go ahead and just put it out there, if we have a work session, we can have a work session or whatever. And it's, um, would be added to our current ordinance. And it would say it should be unlawful to tether a unintended animal, a dog outdoors, went on the property of the dog owner. Dog may run loose when intended by a responsible person who controls the dog, either by force, man or by leash. Uh, went on the property of the dog owner, dogs may run unattended if kept in a secure area, including an fenced in area or a security closure or surrounded by, uh, effectively operating an electronic fence, prohibition. The prohibition regarding when and where dogs may run, loose, shall not climb hunting dogs when they are being used for lawful hunting purposes. That is something I'd like to have to consider.
Um, well, we've got, we've got our audience here today and, uh, I thank them for their comments. Um, the, uh, I would say there's nobody in this room that wants to see an animal mistreated. I think that is very clear. And, and I think we, uh, maybe two points that we're sort of stuck on and one being the tethering. Um, um, I've been asking people throughout the community, I went down to the Creek Stop this morning and sat down there and intentionally asked, brought up the subject and asked a question. And, uh, pictures like this here, um, came to mind and everybody is, opposes an animal being, being treated this way. All the comments I heard down there. You know, we, what we're trying to do is to do the right thing on behalf of the animals. Commissioners, you could step in, correct me anytime you want to. Trying to do the right thing by these animals because they're defenseless, they depend on their, their owners to take care of them. And, uh, you know, I heard a lot of comments, uh, down there, that, that the only time I've asked these questions. But I've pointedly done these things because I want to hear what they had to say and ask them what, you know, what is the solution to it, you know? What are the, what are the negatives about tethering an animal? And, you know, the comments were all over the place, but a lot of what I heard was, you know, we've got this little handful of people causing all of this, the commotion and not the citizens, the biowarriors, when I say this group of people. It's a small number because most people do take care of their animals. And in the conversation this morning, uh, at Creek Stop, got into, uh, horses and about how small pens were, uh, for horses in the county. So there was a lot of comments there, uh, you know, there are no speeders in this room. Nobody in here ever speeds. Because there's a law out there and there's a sign out there and there's a trooper out there. So we never speed. Uh, but if those rules weren't in place, if there was not a deputy or highway patrolman or the signs out there telling us what we need to do, we would probably do different. We would probably speed then. So there is, there is a purpose for the ordinance to be right. First of all, um, it gives the animal control officer the authority to do something. Uh, the gentleman who's here about the noise nuisance, that deputy has to be able to cite that person. He has to be able to pull out his book and say, I'm writing you up and here's a reason, here's what your violation of. So we've got to get this right. So we've got to get this right, uh, we've got to get the tethering right, uh, we've got to get the, uh, the housing right, uh, you know, the dog houses, we've got to get all those things right. And you would really think that we would have had this figured out by now, had us on the books and had it behind us. But I find it, I find it very difficult, because I don't want to punish this person over here, you know, for the faults of the others, but we've got to get it right. Last time we met, um, I made a comment about this five or six signs in North Hampton County that are huge signs, the size of this wall behind me, and they don't have pictures like that, but they have pictures of dogs with, uh, chains around their neck, I believe, and you can see the scars, and you can see the scars on their ears, uh, and my comment was that I don't want to see those signs and get to that, I don't want us to get to that point, to where that has to happen. But whatever we do, Madam Chair, Madam Board, um, whatever we decide on, we are going to have to depend on our Sheriff's Department, and our sheriff is here today. If we're going to change the culture, we're going to change the habits, there has to be enforcement, enforcement has to go over there to the brick building called the courthouse, and there has to be consequences to these things. You know, we shouldn't feel sorry for people that abuse animals, we should not feel sorry for them, and it has come to this, and it's come to that, uh, I don't want to do anything that, that, uh, that hinders, uh, people who want to hunt. You know, we're, we're here for a reason, you know, the gentleman said he moved here because he wanted, uh, quiet, well, there's a lot of people who moved here that want to hunt in, in the, in the county, they buy property specifically to put a hunting lodge on, or, you know, something to come down here and hunt, the people who come from outside the county to hunt, and here, in rural North Carolina, we're in Gates County, and we farm, we log, we hunt, we fish, and we need to be able to come up with a balance to where we don't hinder these, these things. Um, I heard Ms. Hopler say she was going to ride by this address this afternoon, and I probably will do the same thing, uh, to see what's going on last of the road over there. But, um, Ms. Hop and I talked this week over the phone about this tethering, and trying to figure it out, trying to figure it out what's, uh, the best, the best balance on it. So I think we do need to have one more work session. And as you, let me just tell you about work sessions, we meet, the public sits over there, and, um, we ask for comments, or, uh, or you raise your hand and you make a comment. I believe if we do that, please, one more time, and let's come away from there. And keep in mind, we have to have a hearing, but we will not, once we come up with a solution, we will do not delay the hearing record, we'll, we'll go straight to that, and we'll come up with, with a solution. I would like to, um, if we could ask this lady back here from people, um, could, could you stand just a second, Ms. Hop, with a little permission, I want to ask her a question?
Thank you.
You know our ordinance, and I believe, I've stated that I believe tethering is our biggest issue, so we're going to, we're going to study this, and you guys have provided us with information, uh, other ordinances and things like that. What is the other one or two issues that you see that we can be prepared for when we have a discussion?
Um, I think that adequate space needs to be addressed, and, um, standards of care, so that when, if you do, if chaining is banned, that you make sure that, um, there's a minimum size, because what a lot of people will do is, if they can't, if they've fenced in their entire yard, they'll probably put up pens, so you'll want to make a minimum size so that, you know, dogs are not being put in six by six pens where you put one doghouse in there, and they have no space. Also, standards of care to make sure that their area is being cleaned regularly, that the pen or whatever fence enclosure that they're in is in good, um, condition, that it's not dangerous for the animal, many times we see sort of makeshift, um, enclosures because there isn't anything anymore that's to address that, so people will put up some kind of wire, or maybe some poles, but it's, it's really quite dangerous for the animal, so we want to make sure that if you're putting an ordinance in place and banning ch- dog chaining, then, you know, that we're not putting them in a worse situation. So those are two things that I think should be addressed, and I think they are addressed in, um, the ordinances that I've shared with Chairman Hopler and, and the rest of the commissioners.
So I wrote down three things, address tethering, adequate space, and humane maintenance of their living.
Standards of care.
Standards of care. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, I also should say that, uh, Animal Control Officer Eric Waller has made a suggestion, uh, for a, something to add to our animal ordinance, I thought I had printed copy back, do you know, should I read it? Or, okay, it says, about animals running at large prohibited, and said this would help him in his care and adequate duties. It shall be unlawful for any person owning or controlling any animal to allow that animal to create a nuisance or public danger by running at large. Each person owning or controlling an animal, including file, shall be responsible for taking whatever measures are reasonable and necessary for keeping the animal on the owner's premises or under the owner's control when off his premises. This section shall not be interpreted as restricting people owning specially trained hunting, working dogs which can be controlled by voice commands from actually using their dogs for hunting, working in the presence of and under the voice control of the owner or agent of the owner. Uh, so, but he had made a suggestion as well, so, um, we have that to look at as well. So it's a pleasure aboard to try to schedule a work session?
Yes.
Okay, um. To get this knocked out and try to come up with a. Okay, manager, now, if we are trying to make me the.
You do not have to advertise anything related to the text amendments before the first week of March, because you would meet on March the seventh. And then it would have to. Then it would not be in the paper twice, actually, for the, because of the way the March meetings are heard, it would be at the April meeting.
Because the month comes in on Thursday, and we don't meet to the seventh, and, um, that's just a week, it's not two weeks before the nineteenth.
So whether we have five, ten commissioners meet?
If you advertise for the public hearing, it has to advertise two weeks, and whatever text amendments that you want to discuss, and, uh, it will be on March the seventh, there's not two weeks before your March the nineteenth meeting because of the way March starts on the Thursday.
So if we have it, if we have a work session before March seventh, and we can approve them on March seventh.
No, you don't approve them, you discuss.
Discuss.
Agree upon them, and then have it printed to, for the public hearing, the public hearing could not be until the fifth of. Until April the fourth.
April the fourth. And I know, but it's frustrating for people who are passionate, and it's frustrating for us as well, um, but we have to follow the rules, and you'll find, sometimes it is, there's a lot of courts you have to jump through, and one of the things, you have to have it publicized two weeks in a local newspaper, and it has to have the printed text that you're changing. So that has got to be agreed upon beforehand, and March, the way it comes in and the way we meet, does not give us the two weeks to do that. But we still need to have it so we can put it all.
So the best case scenario is, Madam, what you're looking at, town law?
Unless today you sit here and hash it all out, and come up with text amendments, and then there's plenty of time to advertise for public hearing on March the seventh.
Okay, that is an option as well, you sit here, I can, we can just meet and hash it all.
No, not after this meeting, you have to do it during the meeting, and you have to agree upon everything during this meeting.
Okay, why is pleasure aboard?
I'm game for it.
Uh, you have two options, you could go ahead and do everything, read context amendment language today, and then you could go ahead and advertise for you, and then the public hearing would be on the fourth, I mean, not the fourth, uh, March the seventh, or you can set a time to have a work session, and then come up with your text, and vote on everything on March the seventh to have a public hearing, and then that will be on April the fourth, because of the two-week advertisement.
Yeah, yeah, we do that, we do need a work session, because we got to decide how to incorporate anything that we see, you know, whether you want to do it word for word, or maybe just want to adjust work, so we have to have a work session. If that's going to be, um, after the, the March seventh meeting, right after that, commissioners meet, or?
It might be good to have it at an all time, and just, without having all of the tech.
Just a reminder of not having one where the other, you need that because your work session happened immediately following this meeting, this fourth day.
And why is pleasure?
Well, why don't we, why don't we let the work session have its own date, and where it doesn't coincide with another meeting, um, and we want public to be able to, to sit there and, and help us if we, if we need help with it. If we scheduled it at five o'clock, Monday during the week?
Mm-hmm. I think that would be advantageous to, uh, citizens.
Somebody can make, recommend a date?
And we know too, these will not work for Commissioner Gordon.
What about the, um, February nineteenth, President's Day?
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Not at that wait.
Not at that commission.
What about Commissioner Freeman?
I think it's all right.
You just agreed to buy lunch for everyone, what about you, Freeman?
Absolutely, I'll sign someone else's name to it.
Just don't put it like the hot one. Okay, um, Commissioner Phil? That, okay, BSC, work session, um, five o'clock, Monday, February nineteenth, um, and we, now, I thought we had kind of already counted a consensus on the structure of the animal pen, I mean, the animal house, uh, our last, that we all agree on, but we need to consider a tethering, the size of the pen, the standard of care, it's the issues you see, um, certainly will, the Sheriff's Department, we need to ask them about enforcement, because no law, um, we, laws have to be reasonable, they have to be understandable to citizens and fair, and they also have to be enforceable. You can write beautiful laws, but if they're not enforceable, it doesn't help anybody. So we've got to keep, keep all those qualities in mind as we pursue trying to approve our animal ordinance.
Good point.
Um, and we will get you a copy of what the deputy has sent out, the animal control officer about text.
I believe it had been emailed, however.
I think, I think printed, I thought I printed it out. Okay, um. So we need, we just want the motion back, okay? Okay. And I will type this up, or what I had suggested, and say you will have, have this approved, probably. Okay, going to new business. Don't you have that, I think it's time to take a break. Or let's take a ten-minute break, and, um, because it's quarter past twelve, take a ten-minute break, and come back at twelve or. Okay. Thank you for, um, your statements, and, um, we'll start the new business, and for time, the business is budget amendments, and, um.
The first one is, uh, Budget Amendment sixteen, this is moving some money from Miss Lane's in the market section to Inspections Department salary line, but if that's the permanent pair, it should order what we had allocated.
Okay, um, like I say, transfer our funds from Miss Lane's to our emergency, our emergency to Inspections Department, um, do you entertain a motion?
Do I move?
Second.
Sir.
Motion to the Navy Department of Staff, any discussion? Okay, hearing now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Budget Amendment seventeen is to grant it for additional late money for the ESS, and that is the low-income emergency assistance program.
Okay, and we receive additional funds, that means we can help more people with, um, energy assistance in the county, always a good thing, um, do, entertain a motion to approve Amendment seventeen.
Do I move?
Sir.
Motion to the Navy Department of Staff, any, um, discussion?
Oh, does that, does that money have to be used?
It's already, actually, it's already been expended.
Okay.
There were already people lined up, you had listed this, the money, I mean, the paper.
There was, that was waiting.
There was a waiting list, and that money has already been expended, and once this gets put in, they will sign the papers and pay.
They haven't actually spent the money.
Well, um, just to complete that thought, but is that money would have named be spent by June thirtieth?
No, there's another, there's a deadline, of course, it's through March.
Okay. Okay, very, thank you.
And this is already, I think it's through end of March, but that, like I said, they have waiting lists, so this money will be expended out.
Okay, amendment eighteen? Was there a way to take anything? Yes, there was. Okay.
Um, excuse me, that is the way I interrupted with.
Uh, sorry, you always make trouble. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, that one.
Eighteen is, um, a budget amendment for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, we receive additional grant monies for this program, and you see the dates from October seventeen through September fifteen.
Okay, this is, well, when, and so additional funds is coming in, I know, granted.
Yes, that's right.
I, I, I know, but I'll check time for you. Did, uh.
Move to accept by this, two seventeen, what the revision was, that.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen.
Okay.
So I do that motion.
Amendment, the Navy Department of Staff is concerned, transfer of money, uh, not transfer, to budget money for, um, EMP to, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay, the next budget amendment has several parts, but to briefly summarize, you have questioned, um, one of the line items regarding workers' comp and liability insurance that far exceeded our, um, projected amounts. This multi-part budget amendment takes care of that. The budget amendment that is entitled nineteen, shows that we need an additional twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars to be pulled from fund amounts to cover the cost of all our insurances. to cover the cost of all our insurances. And the money will be put into Billy Brown Sheriff's Office and DSS worker comp line items. Nineteen.
What did we, what, what happened? Did we under budget those or?
Um, as. We budgeted based upon what we thought it was gonna be, but because of the number of recs that took place and some other one or two workers' comp insurance claims. The quote came back, uh, which far exceeded what we had budgeted. And we decided that going forward, we would split each, split it out as we discussed at a previous meeting. And put each department's worker comp into their budget. We would put their property liability insurance also into their line, into their department of budget. And set everything all under one category in, um, Billy and Brown's. So that's the purpose of these amendments. Nineteen A is a continuation. Basically, it's moving the eighty thousand dollars that was budgeted in Billy and Brown's into all the line items for each of the departments for, um, liability, property, and workers' comp insurances. Nineteen B moves funds from that were fee reimbursements that were put into salary line items. That money is being moved out into worker comp. And nineteen C is moving the unemployment insurance expense that we will not have to pay this fiscal year. We are moving that also into the worker comp insurance lines within each department. We're taking care of the, of the total budget.
Do we show a deficit on those line items now, as you say?
These are new line items that are being created. If you'll remember, and if I can find exactly in your monthly reports, I had been questioned several times about the line item that is over budget regarding insurance. And this is taking care of that by not only, it, it is taking care of that line in a couple of ways. I'm trying to find.
Is all the general fund, I don't know, Bill?
No, no, I just found it. We've budgeted eighty thousand dollars. The expenditure was a hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars, so we needed seventy-four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. By taking the money from general fund and moving money from the fee reimbursements and from the UI, that makes up the seventy-four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. We are then taking all of the insurance and splitting it into property liability line item and a worker's comp line item within each department. So the budget still balances, still a hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars that was paid out for insurance.
So what's in the comp, is almost double what we had planned?
And it wasn't just workers' comp. That was worker's comp and property liability. That was almost double, yes. And that's why we're splitting it out, so each department will see how a rec, how a worker's comp claim affects that line.
Any additional questions?
Who was our insurance?
Get through into the ACCC.
I don't know who got a check for that.
Excuse me?
How often do we check?
We get paid that and I cannot make the fine. Like I said, when that bill was posted, the bill will change. It's due within thirty days.
It's up, it's on our portion now, we, we through the state and that's our portion? Or is this independent, just Gates County? We're not pulled with a?
Well, it's still pulled, but that's still what Gates County's insurance rate was because there were, I believe, three recs last year in the Sheriff's Office.
So the reason I'm asking it in that way is, um, so if the board said we want X, Y, Z instead of these folks, do we have the ability to do that?
You do, but based on a number from two years ago, it will be even more expensive.
Because this is through the association.
And we receive discounts because we have natural insurances with them.
Workers' comp, um, probably everyone here may know this, but workers' comp is based on classification, what employee make, that classification is set by the state. And you either have a discounted rate on it because you have a good experience or you have a surcharge rate on it because you have a bad experience. So that's what determines it.
Right, and we did, um, get, the rate reduced just a little bit for next year. Because the way the job is classified, it's not a huge difference, but every little bit helps.
And the industry is bad that year. You don't have a simple claim, but the industry across the state is bad. You get penalties.
And we did have one or two workers' comp claims last year as well.
Okay, and we take all these that are wanted. Okay, not for the sport, so do I hear a motion for amendments nineteen, nineteen A, or, uh, nineteen A, nineteen B, and nineteen C? To cover our worker's comp and liability insurance to accommodate the increases in premiums?
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's admitted. Second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, second. Any additional comments or questions?
I will, I will.
Okay.
County manager, our employees know that they need to be safe.
Yes.
And they need to pay attention. And whatever, uh, whatever issues have occurred, we, we are investigating a little bit.
We have a safety committee. Well, we have, one, we have department head meetings. We also have a safety meeting. And anytime there's any sort of accident that's brought up, discussed, um, Billy and Brown is in charge of that through emergency management and he likes up recommendations and then sends that, that department and recommendations on how to prevent that from happening again.
And, um, by law, people working on my roof over here have to package supplies for certificate insurance.
Yes.
For it, so, alright, that's good.
Okay, okay, flip. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed. Okay, amendment one?
Twenty and twenty-one are actually the same issue. It's to correct the way information was entered into logic, was entered incorrectly. So therefore, it has affected the total, um, few line items, and this is just to correct information and logic, so that when we begin using the end of system, the budget is correct.
It's not getting it from the house?
It's not taking it out of fund balance. That's the, it's the tax refund. If you're looking at the one for tax refund, it may sound and then the one for the other one. It's the revenues that, for example, the one on twenty. That is the water. And it is actually fund balance that's inappropriate from the water fund into the general fund to the, um, all of these, the governing board administration and customer service line items based on a percentage of the work that is done by those three departments on the water department activities.
Is there covering the cost of the customer service, the salaries and all that?
For customer service, that's what that is. And then for the governing body, it's a percentage that was agreed to. I believe it's been five years ago with the MAXIMUS cost allocation program.
Or is, uh, does this show up as a deficit on our?
It's supposed to show up on your budget in a different way than the way it has been shown.
Well, what I'm getting at is on our, uh, financial statement, it appeared to me that this deficit, this budget amendment should adjust something.
It is adjust, it is adjust, the way it's written is correct. For example, on.
It's good to understand that.
Uh, for example, if you go to page one of thirty on the expenditure statement, you'll see where it says under.
One of thirty?
Yes, it's the very first page of the budget. If you will see where it says general fund, then governing body is the first. Okay, if you'll see where it says this line, eleven forty-one ten dash eight sixty-one, water and sewer fund reimbursements. And it's the governing body, it says appropriate amount is twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. That should be a negative. It should be in parentheses.
On governing body?
Yes.
The general fund.
What, what line?
Eleven forty-one ten eight sixty-one.
Right.
It's, see where it says governing body at this, in big letters, it go up two lines. That's where it says governing body, that should be a negative twelve thousand because that amount is reimbursed from the water and sewer fund at the end of the year based upon the total expenditures for that account.
It should have been in parentheses?
Yes.
And that, is that a situation that just occurred on that one line?
No, that, that's the solid waste and it's the same two lines.
I'm sure it had expenditure, year, date.
No, because it's not an expenditure. These are the two lines that every year, the solid waste and the water and sewer fund reimburse each two accounts. At the end of the year, based upon the total expenditure for that department, for that account.
Did that cause the parentheses not to be there or?
It was the way it was entered. It's correct, it's the correct, so when it goes in the document, the script will be correct.
Okay, so when all it comes, that won't be an issue. It'll be corrected by that.
Correct.
Very good.
And that's the same with the tax issue as well. It was showing that it was giving no money, even though it had actually been refunded to the clients that have already received refunds this fiscal year.
And as we've, um, heard from once on work, I know we want all the numbers to be correct.
Correct.
So that's why. So that's why I need it corrected.
Nice, yes.
It's easier for me.
I have to react from the issue now.
Yes.
Look, I mean, I've.
The doctor came in yesterday and asked questions, and I'm gonna explain it to her.
That's right. So I had to ask the same question.
You missed a little last night, what you felt.
So, okay, I will prepare to, um, make a motion on this. Uh, for amendments twenty-one.
Twenty and twenty-one.
Twenty and twenty-one.
Commissioner Owens will make the motion that we accept, uh, budget twenty, twenty-one budget amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Freeman's second. And all those in favor, say aye? All those opposed. Half is five, zero, each one. So we can start, uh, with our new software for record. Okay, next item on business is resolution extending the date by which Gates County taxes may be paid without interest. They, um, we were, didn't have a meeting on the seventeenth because of weather. This is the resolution that the offices were closed on January, well, maybe you need to read the whole thing in the record. Commissioner Owens?
Just for your intention, even if you did not read it, this would be a part of the official minute.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, that's up to you. I'm just letting, I'm just letting the general public know if they didn't understand it. They can go back in the official minutes.
That paragraph? Resolution extending date by which Gates County taxes may be paid without interest. Whereas, according to General Statute one oh five dash three ninety-five point one, set to date January fifth for payment of county property taxes without interest. And whereas that date may be extended, the county offices are closed for weekends or holidays. And whereas Gates County experienced significant snowfall and ice beginning Wednesday, January the third, two thousand and eighteen, necessitating closure of Gates County offices, all-day closure on January the fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and all-day closure on January the fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and partial closure on January eighth, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas it is fair and reasonable under these circumstances to extend the deadline by which taxpayers may pay county property taxes without interest until Tuesday, January the ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the January fifth, two thousand and eighteen deadline to pay Gates County property taxes without interest is extended until five P M, Tuesday, January the ninth, two thousand and eighteen, due to implement what? Adopted this the seventeenth day of January, twenty eighteen.
And that, and all of that has already been corrected, all the, uh, just visa.
So with the, that word settled.
Alright.
Discussion, are you ready for discussion?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I cannot vote for this resolution as it's currently written. I sent an email to the county manager and the whole commissioners' topic. We do not have authorization in General Statute one oh five seven five to make changes. However, uh, as we've found, it's considered reasonable. Therefore, based on the discussions with the University of North Carolina School of Government, I think the fourth paragraph should read, in order to protect the commissioners, we think we're doing the right thing. But by law, it doesn't give us permission to do it. So it should read, whereas it is considered, and the word considered, fair and reasonable under these circumstances. And with the, and with envy, intent, and spirit of North Carolina General Statute well five dash three ninety-five point one, come to extend deadline by which taxpayers may pay county property taxes without interest until Tuesday, January ninth, uh, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, Senator Congressman, uh, Attorney Pitt Carter, uh, company office. That way, I feel that the commissioners are not putting themselves in liability because the General Statute considers states that if we make a change, uh, that really all liable for those corners. The commissioners are. And, uh, I think we put that words, words in there to indicate that we think we're doing the right thing because it's fair and reasonable and the, and it's the intent and spirit of the law basically says that, but it doesn't come out of the dress, uh, smoothly.
May I ask when you sent that email because I don't have it.
Oh, sir.
Did you have it, did you forget?
I got one that said that you had concerns about any one of the things with red letters.
Right.
But I didn't, I didn't see the changes.
The test.
The test.
What's wrong with the emails? Okay.
Same one that, that you had, several one had a question about what you did, you couldn't, you didn't get a attachment.
I got it.
You got it?
I get it. I printed. You want a copy?
Okay.
You want copies of that shit?
I think that, uh, I think, uh, very bottom line because, you know, the universal office of citizens says that, uh, we're not authorized to make changes to this. It does not address anything but we can't say. But in the last paragraph, it says, but even if the letter of General Statute one oh five three ninety-five point one doesn't authorize moving deadlines due to unexpected office closures, the spirit of that statute does. And I think we need to acknowledge that in our resolution to, if anyone decides, say, well, the commissioners broke, uh, the law by authorizing abidation from the General Statute they had to partake in. We're stating that it's just being intent law. And we're not changing the law. I think we hit the same thing about your business. Trying to make sure that everyone knows we're not intentionally doing something that we have authorization. Doing something that we have authorization.
I recall reading this, and you're coming about the spirit of the law. I thought that being something that stuck with me. Thank you. So, there's not underlining here, uh, so we're talking about the fourth paragraph.
By the parentheses.
I think we're, we're adding the word considered. And spirit, I appreciate commissioners' attempt to keep us out of the court and keep us from being sued. I mean, I don't see anything, I don't see an issue, uh, with the changes he's, he's asking. He's, he's, uh, putting the, the General Statute in there by number, by code. And, um, and in the U C School of Government's, uh, statement over here, which I have read myself online. Says the intent is within the spirit of the statute. Madam Chairman, I, I don't have a problem, uh, anybody else wants to comment on it? I think they'll say if there is a comment.
I don't have a problem with it, I think it's, to me, I think the intent, uh, uh, if you read the General Statute, I don't think we'd be in trouble. I go to court every day, I, I mean, I could go to court on this and I don't think any judge or jury in North Carolina would find us liable. For extending the deadline for people, who's going to sue us because we gave them extra time? But, I mean, I don't know long, but, but I, I can't imagine anybody suing us for giving them extra time.
Well, if they sue you, you have to pay the taxes. That, in other words, the taxes that were not paid as a result of this, uh, the commissioners could be held liable. And they come out and, and say that.
But I thought we had checked at the school, I want.
Well, and this is the explanation.
That's the explanation, but it's, it's talking about the interest. It's the suing point.
Um, January ninth, if he's a commoner, not here.
Let me just read this, it says, however, this is University School Government, it says. However, General Statute one oh five three ninety-five point one does not authorize moving taxpayer deadlines when offices are closed due to bad weather. Fire damage or any reason other than weekend or holiday. Combine that permission with the prohibition on waiving interest created by General Statute one oh five dash three eighty slash three eighty-one. That leads us to the technical answer that counties are not authorized to move interest deadlines because of bad, of bad weather. So they've already posted here, uh, that, you know, for a technical standpoint, I mean, it probably never happened, no one, uh, maybe do that. But just to put the precaution in place and make sure, uh, that we're, we're not, we don't feel we're, uh, violating the spirit of the general statute. That way it takes out all possibilities that am big.
And like I said, I can, I can, it does remind me, I just, it's, it's a very farfetched in my mind.
Right.
And I know all counties have done it in our region already.
If I may ask, uh, now, um, now this is a resolution, we're, we're basically, we're being on record with this resolution saying, this is what we did.
Right.
In January of two thousand and eighteen. And, uh, and in the fourth paragraph, we're saying we did, uh, because it's fair and reasonable, it's got the common sense. What, this is a rela- resolution for this event, January two thousand and nineteen. Do we have any recommendations when, when a similar situation happens? Even to say the exact scenario, dates and everything.
They didn't have to pass another resolution.
Okay, so this is a resolution.
Or this is one of them.
This one of them. So having said that, uh, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there. And then there's, I mean, we don't need to do anything in anticipation, having a, uh, certain precedence or anything. Don't mean anything, any documentation like that, I'm not talking about changing this, you know? I'm just saying, next time around, if that were to happen, we're going to use common sense just like we did this time. And we'll follow up with a new resolution, a precedent, okay? All right.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to, um, for concern of the resol- resolution?
Madam Chairman, I don't think the motion that we, uh, accomplish resolution with the changes that Commissioner Jordan recommended for paragraph.
Okay, I put, uh, just a couple, and also adopted this day, the ninth day of February instead of January. And also put a comment on the January ninth, like here. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion, uh, motion's been made, second, and for discussion, here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the others, five oh. Okay, and Burgess, uh, Congress said, Mr. Jordan asked us to be, to them?
As we have before you, the, uh, Burgess, Congress, uh, development, uh, the only current orders is for L D. Obviously, the call, Mr. Carey, uh, asking me, did the county have any plans, uh, for economic development of that area? And regards to bringing in, bookings, doors or whatever. Not only discussing things, but, uh, we didn't have anything on going forward like now. And he said his plans are to sell that farm. We're probably not breaking it out into lots of five acres. But if the county wanted to consider purchasing it or if the county had some other idea of seeking certain living and everything else. Uh, he was here, but I mean, he's gone a little bit longer than anticipated, so, uh, he had to leave, he had to go on a point. But, uh, the main thing is that when Lee, uh, agreed to zone and approve that area for that commercial development. Uh, one of the stipulations was that, uh, to get the grant for the sewage development, we had created, what, twenty?
Uh, it's like six, I can't remember, fifty or sixty jobs, but the jobs have already been created.
Right, the jobs have been created, so if he steps out now, he could do it. Uh, my concern would be that if he breaks it up into five acre lots. That, uh, you know, he could bring something out there that could span it, commercial development or, uh. And just wanted to wait for the board and let the board have some thoughts on, uh, what might be a new, uh, proposal. Uh, he did give us a figure, I'm not sure if he wanted us to do a, uh, public side of the figure. But, uh, the commissioners have given some consideration as to what we might want to do. And, uh, before he puts it on the market to break it up into five acres. And I, no telling what they can put out there.
Well, is that a commercial?
It's all zone commercial on the side that the sewer would work on, so, uh, if it was going to be subdivided, it would have to follow all subdivision. And rezoning, if he wanted to rezonate, it would have to go before the planning board.
All right, so if he breaks it up into five acre lots, and he could not break it up into more than three, I believe this.
No, he, well, he's already divided some of that property within the past ten years, so that if he gained any deed would not.
I guess he needs to be aware of the, uh, zoning requirements by himself, I'm thinking. But, uh, wanting to split out that sort of home was aware. Uh, you know, if we want to have some innocent businesses to come in there, uh, certainly, this is a good time to do it. If he wants to get rid of property, I guess, like, uh, the judge.
He stepped up here and apologized for having me, and that was a very brief comment, and that's, yeah, he must, he must be.
Why she said.
Does anyone approach him about not purchasing it for any?
The only time I've talked to him is when he stepped up here, I'm just, sorry, sir.
I, I think he's had some requests for five acres or so. And he wasn't quite sure what he wanted to do with it, whether they were just going to have a little farm at, or whatever. But, uh, it's not zone agriculture.
That's not, I mean, that's not, houses cannot be built for that.
Yeah.
It's commercially insane.
Well, this is, this whole business coming out now.
But he is, he has been made aware from previous discussions that the property's on the road. And it's been probably two years though, since he's made aware of that because of when Gates houses put down there.
So he sold five acres of office with the commercial office, basically.
Yes, I just want to interject too, there would be some possibility to recapture some of the firmament as well. Because Mr. Carey has enjoyed the benefit of present use on some of those portions of land, so that would be another. From taxation point of view, you capture one year plus three prior years, if any, the property that, for any of those parts, so we just can leave them there. We, we think that's natural, so we do it anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, Mr. Jordan, that meant you, just making us aware.
Yeah, basically, want to make you aware, and, uh, now he has put, uh, charts in here, we see the, the acreage and the lots that we're talking about. Makes a pretty good picture of where we come from.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number ten, resolution is for Secretary of Road and Ed, petition for North Carolina State Highway fourteen fifteen, commonly called, commonly, uh, Fort G. I know it's been a long wait, uh, it's been, uh, like, uh, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Uh, not, not really, I mean, this, I would like to know, consider, um, you consider it, I don't want to drag you into a ten year D O P. But earlier, I don't want to be in a situation like you.
Okay, commissioners?
I don't think she's involved.
We have a map that was in front of us before us, and we have the resolutions. It was in the new business, at the first last one.
Madam Chairman, by D O T being here, I don't really have any objection. That I would, move forward.
I think if anything, what we, uh, might have discovered, from, I saw him taking, taking some notes, uh, about it not being taken care of. So I can take a favor, favor, uh, of it not being taken care of, and, but that's been ongoing, it's not just something new.
And it's not just that road, that's not being taken care of, it's the stomach, we had grass road up, that's on roads. Um, it was the one there by Carlos Carroll, um.
Jay, Jay Carroll, maybe, yeah.
We've had a lot of maintenance, but you know, they're, more of a stacky.
That's what I'm confused now, it's the N C thirty-seven. So this comes off of N C thirty-seven, not one fifty-eight.
It connects to the same one.
Right in front of the old prison?
Up the other side, one fifty-eight.
I saw, we're talking about.
It's not whole road either, the, the road's paved halfway, well, partially paved and then goes to dirt.
It stops at the take, stops being paved right here. Okay, now, when we pick up over here, on the one fifty-eight.
And I will have some citizens, I would say some citizens came to me and said they were not in favor. I do tell them that they need to come and, you know, speak here and open set, you know, open comments, or to write a letter and then they did.
They, they, the landlords.
They were citizens. But, um, Tony has spoken to the landlord on this road, and that's, that was, that's whose names are on here.
That was my question, but, but Doug Freeman, he did contact.
Yes, he actually signed the same, he signed all of the same things that, that we would start maintaining the road as a good property. Because he didn't, he, he wants it to be a private road so that we can definitely leave the trash dump and then they can.
How about there will be a change for a call for traffic shit?
Yes, it has an attractive counter, but you don't want a traffic counter. I've seen those on there several times since I moved there. You know, my biggest thing is it just, it's on a downhill trend, and, uh, you know, the training direction is just going in the wrong direction for all of our private roads. And I have to be one of the people that lives on one of them, and I'm willing to maintain it myself, but I can't maintain it for everybody.
It's not just the crowds in order to do.
Well, I agree with that statement, but all I can do is do, all I can do is fix my situation, I can fix it, that's it.
How, how, uh, far a distance are we talking about, a half mile, four mile?
The length of the road that we abandoned, um, probably, um, um, probably three quarters of a mile.
Of course. And that's been long enough.
Well, maybe to, if they bring any, I was just saying, it's fine, it's close to a mile.
And actually, uh, no one's really had likely to come through there after it was abandoned.
That's right, except for, um, fireball, and they got to make the most of it. Where it's used a lot, probably.
So, for the need, because you, you threw that in there, um. Where, where the road, where the asphalt meets the dirt part? You're going to be taken care of, but is it going, is no fence going to be there or anything?
Well, I mean, if it gets to a point where I can't control traffic, then I can, I certainly have the ability to put fences on, gate or something. But not right where, it's not right where the road's, that paved road meets the, there's still be some private road left there. Because right off the farm's a farm down there, and he's got to be getting that farm, the roof needs on that farm.
Okay.
So it's not up an entire ground, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I'll see that.
This is a loop road, though, it loops around to one fifty-eight. Yeah, suppose, suppose you said, uh, I'm here now. I'm moving to Florida. And, uh, so we promptly, you asked us to, what, I mean?
Well, I mean, my parents and I own together that farm, it's about a thousand acres there.
But it doesn't extend over, there you go, but my point again is if, if you decided to, uh.
Sell a piece, sell a piece of property.
Right, then all of a sudden, uh, does that go with it?
Yes.
Does the, uh, other owners assume the same, you know, responsibility or whatever? I'm just, I, you know, I, I understand, I've seen this done before, but, uh, but being a loop road like that, I do have some apprehensions. Because while it's not paved, it, it does connect to the one fifty-eight side, and, uh, school buses don't go down there?
There is one, uh, one school bus goes down there, but it doesn't have to, it can go around. If I was having a school bus, it can go, if it was my school bus, it can go down there. Because of how bad the road is, I don't, I mean, I, I make my trucks to go around, they're all done with. So I don't want to deal with that.
There's a, Parker Road is now paved and is a, is a better, uh, better road situation, actually Parker Road is better. It's a little bit wider than I thought it would ever be, it's wider than the shoulders on there, and I recently went through there. So that is far as being closed off, uh, by that road there's, but there's always one fifty, uh, there's always one fifty-eight to the other, other direction. And, um, and Parker Road in the other direction, if you wanted to go to the same, same direction that this road would take you. Uh, that road will never be paved, let me say that just, and I'm not, I don't know. same direction that this road would take you, uh, that road will never be paved, let me say that just, and I'm not, I don't know all the roads that, where, you don't intend to, to develop it.
Right.
Because you're, you're gonna farm it, so there won't be any more houses there, so it won't be paved.
Not, I'm not saying.
Yeah, right.
Why would it pay the rent?
Well, the house is paved, go down to address where Officer?
Officer George lives there.
Yeah, the church.
That's why the first one was paid, because we didn't, when we shared, we had kids.
And, your, your, your road, the name of your road is?
Wheel Lane.
Wheel Lane, yeah. So it comes from Cotton Gin Road, where the, uh, old prison and, and between them.
The going way you did by, that's all, is all that you?
Yeah. You know, we didn't, Natalie said you had some calls, but they didn't, you told them they needed to come.
Or to write a letter.
Or to write a letter.
And nobody?
So they had that opportunity.
And it was tough times, I mean, it, because, as someone mentioned, they, they were not for it against it, they were just interested, you know, where the road was.
I had no, um, I had no calls about it, no requirements.
And I've never asked for that, but, no one's called me for that, but.
And like you say, it's like, Mr. Officer, who has property, or he's farming something, he'll be able to go down the road and everything.
But, I think another point that's come up also, that we haven't considered, uh, is the fact of this, we just, uh, it's all spray, we're installing spray feel now, uh, in the area, and one of the, uh, predicted plans for that project was to service Buckland School. And if we made a private road, actually, we'd have lab roads running lines, uh, down there to hit the Buckland School. And so that's a, a big consideration as well.
But that option has never thoroughly been discussed or priced, I know it's been thrown out of the arena too.
But that was, that was, that was one of the, one of the reasons, uh, we, we really wanted to do that was because of the problem that we have with the sewage system, you know, whether or not we, uh, don't have really determined what we need to do to do that. And that certainly was in the plans, uh, for, for proving that project, because that was certainly helping Buckland School and their sewage situation.
Well, it's, of course, we don't have Buckland School to be there forever. I think there is some part of trying to consolidate, you know, instead of having so many buildings on the street.
Can I, can I object on that one? From personal, I own the spray feel, because I'm, I'm not digging, I operate, I operate spray feel. You can buy a land, plus the Buckland School, and you can pump water that far. I guarantee that. Buckland Water may have any pipeline, it's not cheap.
Well, all of that is, you think you build this somewhere?
I know you can, I know you can buy a land, I own Buckland School, and put, and put spray feel, that's cheap, and you can pump it all the way to the home that you take, I might try and get it off this.
But which way?
That's good for what you're here.
We've got a grant, uh, how much is that grant?
That grant does not cover that, that grant only covers what we're currently dealing with there.
All right, we're running a pipe down one fifty eight to the, uh, Commerce Center, so are we gonna do that?
Commerce Center is already, we're, currently we're running pipe from, um, Honey Pot all the way up Cotton Gin, down the line to the spray feel, and total of the entire project's on a little two million dollars. And according to Mike, which I, our company said, have to force name for Buckland, and it would be very expensive. And that was just on the top of this head, without any numbers or any true discussion or projections.
And the county will have, just so you know, the county will have to maintain a, um, utility easement, on Cotton, that section of Cotton Gin Road, because there is a county water line that comes from that, well, it's flush with that, so. And you've gotta go and get that county water line, so that easement will be in place, if you ever had to run a sewer line down there, you, you'd have, you'd only have easement, a utility easement.
Coming in from which direction?
First side. County water line comes from, what, what is it, we call it Washington House, that first house, and then I just, I'll do it there. So I may have a water line like four thousand feet.
That's a pretty good distance.
Okay, any other comments or, yeah, motions?
Well, my thoughts are right now, that even if we would consider, maybe a resolution off to acknowledge something like that, you know, any, uh, utility projects the county, uh, have enclosed or immediately would be allowed or permitted. I would, I wouldn't worry that, but anyway, that's not all.
Well, we could get a, um, memorandum of understanding or a easement, or document signed, whereby, made up and signed by the, if that, if, you know, I think that would be.
Where if one exists, it would be worth?
No, no, that's people, I mean, Pitt's already been aware of the, the county water line down there, so he knows about that, how they showed that, probably didn't care.
That the easement will be, um, we'll get an easement.
She'll have to be too, just, we're, it's already power line, it's, it's on the state by the way, so, and Hartley, you know, mine too, so that, that easement for that has to be put in place, and, um, kind of, it isn't counted as water, so, those, those are generally, it's already.
So we just blew it, on our utility, it'd be a utility easement.
Since Pitt's gone a little bit late for it.
Actually, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it's.
And, um,
I don't know what he means, it's something I don't understand.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion. Um, I would like to see, um, our county manager take the comments and, uh, statements that she's heard here among the board, as well as Bundy, um, and share this with, with the, our attorney, we don't have a conflict there, our county, our county attorney, and have him, um, address this with us, this is a, um, this is dealing with land, so I would think that maybe he, maybe doesn't close session next time, so he can share the rest of his thoughts.
Yes, but I don't know if it's right this time.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I'll pull my motion here in just a minute, um, and so I'm thinking we should table, table this, Natalie, you want to?
No, you can just table it, but I'll move right back.
All right, Madam Chairman, well, only we'll make a motion that we, uh, table this topic until our next meeting. I'll say that motion.
Okay, and the reason we're tableing it?
Um, with utility, utility easement alone, uh, yeah, not, I don't think there's an issue, but I think we would be neglecting our due, if we didn't get a little advice on that.
I just wanted to.
Sure, correct, sure, no problem.
Okay, you've heard the motion a second in discussion.
And we'll add that into the resolution?
I don't know, it could be added in the resolution, I think the easement would be a document that would be, um,
Attached to.
With the easement, would be filed with the Regent of Deeds.
I think that's what we're talking about, Pitt's attorney, uh, who gives the guidance on how that should be done, whether or not it should be included in the resolution or what's.
It would be in the resolution, because if you go to the Regent of Deeds, there's a lot of easements in the Regent of Deeds, for dominion power, R E A, and everything, you have to have those on file.
Yeah, Gates County, uh, water department, so.
Yes, so that easement would be on file, that wouldn't be necessarily attached to you. Because, even I would look up this, I would look up the land, and then you look up the easement, if what. Okay, any other comments? Question? Okay, I think we're all aboard on this, uh, uh, the issue before us is to table this until we consult with our attorney, Pitt government, concerning easement. Is that what the asset?
Utility easement.
Utility easement, for the county.
And that's all we need to address.
Is that, the understanding that, that, that we're going to address? Okay, starting the grid?
Uh, uh.
Uh, okay, so we'll get each, you know, top line, right? And top, yeah, we're talking in, no, we'll get top, I would say, fast, we'll do the quarter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I know it's been a long wait. Okay. Lovely. Eighteen, nineteen budget discussion.
Well, this is basically just a request or thought, I know we had a separate meeting last year, it was very, very short, so I'm deciding to add it to the agenda today. Uh, anything in particular you want me to consider for fiscal year nineteen budget? And I will, um, also make you aware that there will be, um, salary study information that will be of consideration for fiscal year nineteen budget.
And she will report to us?
Well, I would save that for after this.
Okay, um, but there is, you know, the salary study has been done, and we'll get the results of that, and that would, there would be some increases there. To, uh, you know?
For you to consider.
To consider.
She wants to email you what we're thinking.
You can email her, or if there's something right now, because departments are working on their budgets. Or if there's any capital budget items that you know of, go ahead and let me know, I know Crystal Phillips already has a list. A lot of them do involve that courthouse, since we have fixed the roof, she wants to go in and do some repairs, and the dangers caused by the roof, and all the leaks over the years.
Well, I'm sure it's all, you know, with the school situation and all, it's not gonna get a lot of extra money or money, which it never is, but I think this is gonna be a critical.
Well, I would like, I know a few years ago, we, um, we entertained, um, refinancing, some loans, and we actually did some refinancing, uh, we paid some, uh, three different times, I believe, we paid additional payments, not a full payment, but like fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, I think I believe, on some things to, to attempt to save us some interest, so I'd like to just, uh, see something done on that.
Just die in there.
Like on a spreadsheet and say, and, and, and see if there's a one that we can retire, uh, a little early, um, again, just talking about schools, so I wanna talk about our sinking fund, uh, for future school projects, um, I want to see some grass growing at the library.
There is grass growing, sir.
Um.
And it's already, we've already had plans for March to go out there and do some more.
Very, thank you.
If not, last week under the snow, but there has to be grass, there has to be grass.
Uh, very, very.
The plan's right in there to do some more grass, um, in March.
And, um, I'll come up with something else, I'm sure.
Okay, Jack likes to spend money.
I'll spend it the right way.
Okay, anything else, hey, we have, if you have anything, email Natalie in the next few days, a week, things that you might like to see in the budget. Okay, leaving them up, what about comments?
Wow.
Citizens comment?
Y'all talk for a while, I gotta go work, I mean, if y'all talk for a while, I don't have to go work, so.
We got blue session, remember?
And you have another work session.
You had a work session.
That's not all for the day.
It's you all for the night. No, help comment, uh, citizen, uh, citizen comments, I will move commissioners comments, Ray, we start with you each time of day, we'll start with you third time.
All right, very well, ma'am, certainly appreciate the attention that, uh, everybody's giving, and most especially, again, appreciate the calls we get, and I get through the week, including this morning, last night, ten fifty five, as pertaining to, uh, to what your needs are, and we, uh, we look at that, and we don't vote as pertaining to how we feel, we vote on how we hear from, if we only hear from one, that's the way to vote, and, uh, if we hear from five, it's way easier, so. Appreciate that input, it, uh, gives us some education, certainly gives me some education on what you're looking at, so thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your attendance, and I sent them this, this morning, we have two stuck in there all day, appreciate that, and the rest are happy here. But I appreciate that, all of that, and as Ray was saying, any decision we make in here, we try to make it for the good of Gates County and not the good of any individual, and just thank you.
I too, thank everyone for being here today, all the citizens' input and concern, uh, hopefully we addressed some issues that have been longstanding, especially in the highway department, and, uh, thank our employees for the job they do to keep up to the work.
Two or three topics today, uh, again, some of them take, do take the time, um, to come down to the final solution, or the final decision, and, uh, that is merely because we take them seriously, and because we hear opposing comments, and both comments, uh, and critiques, uh, they're both, they're both about it, whether we like them or not, as the voters, citizens, they bring them to us, so, and again, thank you for your participation today, and, uh, another good evening, Tom, good job.
And thank you all for coming as well, certainly has been, um, a lot of issues, and, and I think all of us would agree, but I'm, that's the move quickly, it takes, it's very deliberate, and in many reasons deliberate, so sometimes you can rush towards decisions and you wake up a few months later and realize, oh, it's a blow like that, for a little bit more, uh, so, and with the ordinances on animals, we certainly want to do it right, and I have to revisit it constantly, so let's go and take some time, and hopefully we can get it, the work session, we can come up with, um, valid improvements to our animal ordinance, none of us want anything that, uh, animals are used. Um, we also know that February is Black History Month, certainly remember those who are in our community, um, certainly as someone was asking me last night about some individuals, and I was trying to realize some, that they were for use, and like the T S school, what school's named for, um, the Reed School here, at Reed's Grove, and a variety of one, uh, that we have, I believe the first African American, um, was African American, was located here at Gates County, it's Mitchell, Paul Mitchell, um, so, you know, those are pioneers that we need to remember, um, at this time, this, uh, particularly at this time, since it is Black History Month. Listen, hope you all have a wonderful day, uh, we have some more meetings to attend, but, uh, we appreciate your attendance, and we'll be open for business again on, from March eighth, so, March eighth, so we'll see you then.
Okay, one thirty, and we'll go into pointy sides, close session, let me, um, I like making the conditions, I mean, we need to post that, so, we'll come on January second, three days, three eighteen, eleven, A, Legal, Economic Development, and Real Estate, F S D. Do I have a motion?
So, say it.
Okay, all three of you say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session, so. Okay, it's time for our motion to come, aye, closed session.
So, move, say it.
Motion to convene a proper second, all those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to a. Intend motion to adjourn.
So move, yes, sir.
Okay, um, all those in favor of adjournments say aye. Need adjournment.